Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very perfect. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another orientation session for the East City Council. The date is June the twentieth, I'm sorry, June the seventh, twenty twenty-one, and the time is six oh one P M. All right, so this is orientation session for the council to ask some questions, so tonight's agenda. I know that we had a item to add it. I just want to make sure, city clerk, that we're all on the same page. Oh, item eight.
Mister Mayor, I couldn't hear you. I couldn't hear you.
I was just talking about the the agenda for tonight. I know that we had a couple of items added, so I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page with that.
Um, with the reference to the items that V J sent?
Uh, but.
On Friday evening?
I know that those didn't make it on. I'm talking about.
Okay, oh, for, uh, yes, for, um, the special event for here, uh, Harrison Liquor Store on the nineteenth, yes, that one was sent to, um, council, yes.
Okay, so it's item A, B, C, D, and just item E.
E, yes, mhm.
The Harrison Liquor Special Event. Okay. All right, started with item A. Any questions as it relates to the consideration and approval of the budget appropriations?
Yes, Mister Mayor, if you can have V J go over the water rate, so our residents to know what's going on.
Yes, ma'am. V J.
Yep, is actually is, uh, Jerome on here by chance?
Let me see. I don't see Director Bibas on as of yet. I know that he is getting on. We can see where he's at. There he is. Go ahead, V J. Do you have a question?
Yep, uh, Jerome, uh, would you be able to run through the just high level, the change that occurred in the water and sewer rates? Um, Mayor Pro Tem Howard was just asking about that. Uh, I know you sent the file over, but I just wondered if you might be able to give just a quick overview of it.
And and reference to what, V J?
We're talking about.
The increase in the rate?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, that's that's a formula that's done by Plant Moran and you, um, to calculate the rates based on the X amount of projects I have in there, based on the rate that Glee was sends us. So it's a formula that's used. I'm not familiar with the formula, but that's how the water rates are count calculated, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, thank you. So what will will the water rates go up?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you have a lot of projects. Okay, okay, so we need to have Brian on your, someone who can explain that and how much.
I think it's come, um, towards the, I think, just before you guys adopt the budget, V J, is Plant Moran panel doing the water rate presentation tonight?
Um, let me see if I think that's part of, um,
Yeah.
Brian's presentation.
Yeah, it says, it says on the agenda, it says adopt the appropriation in the water rate, so that that's when they they usually explain what's all going into the water race and how they came about that rate.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's part of the PowerPoint presentation, um, just rolling into that real quick.
Yeah.
And.
Mayor Pro Tem, I provide them the information to formulate the water rate. So I give them all the projects for F Y twenty-two that's coming up. I give them the contract from Gleewa, and then I get the wa- water increase, which I got. I gave that to you last week, right, sir? I sent that email to y'all from Gleewa last week that they passed their water rate, right?
Yeah.
So that's all formulated into the rate. And then, you know, what we do far as our expenses, that's formulated into the rates to salary and expense account. All that's formulated to the rate. So, yes, it will be going up, and the current rate is sixteen seventy-five right now, so I expect it to probably go up, probably, uh, probably in the neighborhood of three point five to probably four percent increase.
Okay, okay, so that's what the citizens need to know. So thank you. Brian can give us that the presentation.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Uh, did that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, you're talking to me?
Yes.
Yes, it did. I just need to know. And if they, if you couldn't provide it to us, then Brian has to provide us to us.
Oh, yeah, it's in every budget here. I mean, just before the budget is approved, the water waste are rolled out, and it's a presentation, you know, and it comes from the fin- uh, financial office.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And is Brian on here right now by chance?
I don't see Brian on here as of yet, but I know that he is supposed to be getting on.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Shaw.
Us- usually, we have this in the in the budget book. I don't understand why we we getting ready to talk about this and move forward with this, but where where is the the budget books that we usually get so that we can be able to have those things within the budget book?
Uh, Councilman Shaw, uh, in the budget books, you normally get the general fund budget, appropriation budget for, uh, police council and all that on the general fund, and you give my road budget. The water race is always adopted at the meeting with before you get get ready to approve the budget, the same meeting. So you get that in a presentation. That's what V J was saying. That's part of Brian's PowerPoint tonight. So you wouldn't have that before you. You just get that in a presentation on why the water race is going up.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about what you're talking about. I'm asking a question concerning the budget books and where are they?
Okay. Oh, I can't answer that one, sir, sorry.
No, it's not to you. I'm not speaking to you, Jerome. I'm speaking to the to the chair.
Yeah, so if I know that V J and Plant Moran would been have been working all week to actually get the actual document out as it relates to the budget book itself, but all the documents that you need is in 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 front of you. I know that we didn't get one last year from Darren. Um, however, I know that we had talked about when you we used to be on council together that we would be presented with the budget book. So that's why I was trying to get out to you to make sure that you all had that. Um, we had a number of items that kind of overlapped with going into D and payroll this week. We had a couple of hiccups that we were dealing with and put the the book for the most part on pause, but we do have it in process of being, um, formulated, but you do have all the documentation that should be going into the actual book itself into the binder. Does that answer your question, Councilman Shaw?
Yeah, I hear what I hear what you're saying, but we we have, uh, only a a few more weeks before this actually has to go down, so you know, I would love to have that not, I don't have no, I mean, no paperwork concerning, you know, all of the documents. So I don't know what you mean by that, but.
You say you don't have the actual printed copies of the budget?
Not not the printed copies. I mean, uh,
You had the electronic copies.
If he sent us something on email, you know, it's in a different type of format than
Gotcha.
what we usually get. So, uh, that's that's just my concern with that, you know. Others may not, you know, have that same concern, but that's concerned with me because we usually have something like this before.
Yeah, and I may be, I may be mistaken, Councilman, uh, Shaw. I know that, um, last year when we received the budget, we received it um, electronically, and then Darren printed it off and, um, gave it to us like in a in a packet, not necessarily in a binder. So, you know, this year, just with everything that has been happening and just trying to get all the information formulated, I know that, uh, V J and the city clerk was kind of going back and forth as it relates to the, um, the budget being printable and getting that document out to you guys. So we wanted to do our, we we've done our best to, you know, give you the all the electronic information that it relates to the budget. We've, uh, had several series of, uh, budget talks and through special meetings as it relates to the information. Um, so it's just now just putting it into the actual binder for you to, so you can have it, so you can reference it. So we'll get that, we'll get that to you.
All right.
Okay. Now, that's and 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 let me make sure that I'm on the same page. Now, city clerk, we should have here the consideration approval F Y twenty-one, twenty-two budget appropriations and then the water sewer rates, but also two in here we should have, I mean, these things have to be removed from the table. But the other one is the consideration of the F Y twenty-two budget amendments.
Um, the twenty twenty-one budget amendments, I believe.
Yeah, both of those should actually be removed from the table. So even with, uh, item A under new business, I get the water rates being added to that.
Mhm.
The budget itself should be removed from the table as well. So, um, as it relates to the consideration and approval of the F Y twenty twenty-one budget amendments, I know, um, it's been, you know, communication between, um, emails and folks actually calling in and speaking with the treasurer. But if you have any questions as it relates to now, this is the time for us to to ask those questions.
Um, Mister Mayor, I'm sorry for clarity purposes. I thought that the, um, the F Y twenty-one, twenty-two budget was just, um, removed from the agenda period until this meeting. So I don't, I don't think that was under previous business.
Let me see.
Are you looking this?
Yeah, I think both of them were tabled, city clerk. Both of those items were tabled, but, you know, um, again, I I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I don't have a problem with however we're gonna do it. It's on the agenda.
Okay, under the minutes I have removed from the agenda, so it was removed, so nothing ever, I'm sorry. No, I didn't, Mister Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm looking for it on the, um, on the minutes, I'm sorry.
We'll get, we'll get it.
Okay, so you want to put it, it's gonna be item B under previous business?
Right. Yeah, that's what it, that's how it should be.
Okay.
And then if it's removed from the table, you know, then it goes on the new business.
Okay, got you.
Okay. Go ahead, V J, did you have something? I saw you.
No, I'm sorry. My, uh, I had to restart my computer. Everything started crashing. I'm not sure if there was a question to me, though. Um, I, uh, I probably missed the last couple of minutes, though.
Yeah, no, no, we were just actually just talking about the, uh, F Y twenty twenty-one budget amendments, and if it was any questions from this body as it relates to that.
Okay.
I know it's been some discussion over email, and let me just say this right off, uh, council, um, whatever, uh, suggestions you put before us as it relates to, um, different amendments and and cost savings measures, we want to make sure that we implement those. This is the mayor's recommended budget, so, um, you know, I asked for you all to weigh in, and we've had we had a a pretty decent amount of discussion and time for this to think about it and go back and forth. So I know that we were presented with some stuff from Mayor Pro Tem Howard and also too from Councilman Steve Chisholm, um, and and had some concurrence along the way. So I just wanted to make sure that you all know that we want to make those changes and put those things in place as long as it, you know, it makes sense, um, for the overall budget. So feel free to ask any questions or tell us anything else that you want us to to remove or because we want to work in in conjunction together.
And Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Williams.
Um, I I, you know, I I know I know that you haven't been doing it, and I'm new on council. Uh, I need to get, uh, how how do we do, uh, we put on, do we have to put on the agenda? I need two resolutions done for, uh, people in the community have have passed on. Uh, you know, one of our, uh, Easter Housing Commissioner, uh, Sister Block, she passed away, and plus, uh, Pastor been in the community for over fifty-seven years, Pastor Hardy Johnson. How do, how how do we go about doing that? Can we just make a resolution, a motion to have the resolution done by the clerk or what?
City clerk, you want to answer?
Um, no, it's customary that you would just contact the clerk's office and, um, turn in the information related to, um, the actual deceased person, um, so that they have something to write the proclamation from. Um, and so, um, normally, we ask for a week's time to be able to do that.
How much time you need?
I'm sorry, I make you pardon?
How much time you need?
Um, I'm not, I'm not writing the resolution, Councilman Williams, um, so.
So proclamation, proclamation or resolution?
Yeah, I'm not writing the proclamation, so, um, I wouldn't know. I would have to ask Malika how long she knows somebody, what she would need to do that.
Yeah, we can get those, we can get those done, uh, Councilman Williams.
And she's out of, she's out of town, um, I believe, from the sixth to the eleventh. I think she sent you guys an email and sent it to the administration.
Yes, she is, and I did talk with Denise earlier today, and she's in the in the position to do that.
Okay, I think, I think.
We can't get it done.
I think both funerals is, uh, Saturday, this Saturday coming up. So if we get them to you by Monday, somebody can do it.
Well, the day, today is Monday, so we.
Today is Monday.
I mean, we give it to you at least by the, uh, I I don't know how long it would take the family to give us a write-up, but.
Yeah, we go, we'll, we go definitely make sure we take care of those. I mean, because you have Samuel Ward Bay was activist in the community as well, along with, uh, my grandfather Reverend George, uh, George Johnson. So we want to make sure that we take care of those.
Okay, so I I'll just leave it in the in the administration hands.
Yeah, we did. We definitely need the information, so whatever you can do. I know that, uh, Commissioner Brock, we want to make sure that we get that information for her and then, you know, be able to take care of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So all of the, all of the funerals seem to be following the same day, whether it's Friday or Saturday, so we definitely gonna need, uh, some assistance in making sure that we get those to the families and get them read into the account if that's what the families want in the administration and the council. Okay. I was looking for questions, comments in relates to the, um, the budget amendments.
And so, so, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What what was, what was implemented that needed to be implemented that satisfies, uh, the members of council? Uh, was they, was they satisfied with those implementations or it didn't get implemented or was?
Yeah, I think, yeah, well, let me, let me, let me say this again, um, several emails were exchanged, and, uh, the treasurer, you know, may have mentioned in one of the emails that, you know, we wanted to have a full body of council, but, you know, me and him, we talked, and again, this is the mayor's recommended budget. So with the council, we wanted to be inclusive, make sure that all those things were heard, and we're just saying tonight that if those things, um, you know, are are things that should be considered and in a way that, you know, is going to be um, physically responsible, we're we're gonna honor those. So everything that's on the list between, again, the mayor approach and Howard had suggested some things, and then, um, Councilman Chisholm has suggested some things in in writing. So I'm gonna know V J is prepared to make those changes, whatever we need to do. And that's what we want to do. I think the only thing that was kind of sticky and that we would possibly have to talk about is holiday pay for the police. So we're all on the same page. I know that, uh, last year during budget session, we didn't necessarily have a direct conversation that relates to how how do they pay for individuals in the police department. So I know that because this issue have come up several times, we need to probably had a discussion. And, uh, from one of my understanding, because of personnel, we need to do it within closed session. So, um, yeah. Unless anybody has anything to add to that.
So it it'd be good, you know, to be able to talk about that so that we can make sure that all minds are satisfied, at least to some extent, uh, so we can make sure we can get one of these things off the table and moving forward, because we still have the F Y twenty-one and twenty-two budget that we still have to deal with.
Right, and so, I mean, when we were seeking, um, feedback, one of the things that we wanted to make sure is we're not yeah, changing the numbers for one person. And that's why when we got, uh, feedback from one council member, we try to bring in all council members to see, hey, what are thoughts on this, just so we could encourage that type of discussion. Um, the the reality is we don't want to make any changes just to accommodate one person when we know it's important for us to consider the full contingent.
Let's see, Brian has joined, V J. I don't know if you had a question for him.
Um, yeah, we could, uh, we could bring Brian in real quick, um. We could.
There he is.
Good evening.
Yeah. Hey, Brian.
Uh, Brian, uh, just to loop you in, well, one thing with the that we, uh, spoke about early on was the, uh, the water and sewer rates, and there was some question as to how that's calculated. We were hoping that you may be able to shed some light on that.
Sure, I'm glad to. Uh, good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. Uh, we do a five-year smoothing rate model. What that means is we take the last couple of years of actual information, and then we extrapolate it, project it out forward over the next several years using a, uh, series of assumptions. So our rate increase from Gleewa is approximately, you know, three to four percent a year. Sometimes it's lower, sometimes it's higher. Our sewer cost increase is about the same. We, uh, factor in various capital outlay projects, uh, with input from Jerome. We have the existing debt rate schedule for all of the debts that the city has in the water and sewer system. We project that out over five years, and then whatever it's calculating, we smooth it out. So the idea is that you're going to have continuous rate increases, but they're very level, very even, a few, maybe five percent a year. But it what it prevents is a year of zero and then a year of, say, twenty. And if we were to ask you to raise rates by twenty percent, we know that it would cause a lot of chaos with within the community, and so we want to prevent that. We want as smooth an annual increase as possible. At the end of the five years, there's a target amount of working capital that the city would have on hand. What is working capital? It's not exactly just cash, but it's cash and receivables that are about to be turned into cash less the immediate accounts payable, less one year's worth of debt service. And so if everything happens according to plan, and it never does exactly, that's why we update it every year. If everything happened according to plan, at the end of year five, you would then achieve your target working capital. So I don't have the exact model in front of me, uh, but these rate increases are driven by the model. And so the, we go into it expecting a rate increase because things just happen to cost more. And capital projects are always increasing. So if you recall, members of council, uh, it was probably a year and a half, two years ago, when I gave you your first presentation, uh, on the budget and state of the finances, uh, we included a discussion about water and sewer in that between lead line replacement, things that are going to be passed to you from the county related, uh, to the sewer system, and then various, uh, Eagle, uh, which used to be M D E Q, uh, projects that the state was going to require the city to do, there was going going to need a significant continuous rate increase in order to pay for all of that capital. So what has been proposed to you is recognizing that you have a lot of capital improvements that need to get done over the next several years, and so you you should anticipate ongoing rate increases of approximately the same amount. Does that answer the question?
Brian, will you do a presentation, um, as it relates to that, similar to what you did before for this body?
For water and sewer for all all finance?
Well, it's water and water and sewer, and I know you're gonna do a little bit of something tonight.
Yeah, I'd be happy at any time to give a a formal presentation on on the details of the water and sewer system.
Hmm, now, I know that, um, as it relates to the item that's on the agenda tonight for approval um, of the water and sewer rates, will you actually do a presentation and a breakdown of like the increases where you see those at and the formula that you're talking about for the general public?
I I was ready to talk about the the budget as a whole, not the the water and sewer rates in detail, but I I would be happy to 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 wing it. I can go into more detail than, uh, what I just did. Um, but it's it's all a function of that model.
Mhm, it's just a high-level overview of what, you know, you know, kind of basically what you just said.
Sure.
As it relates to just the increase in how we, you know, calculate that.
Sure.
And then, and then, Mister Chair, you know how we used to have like, uh, you know, the actuals, you know, if the water, you know, rate is five dollars and thirty-six cent or the sewer rate is ten dollars, I mean, just giving us a breakdown of, you know, also what those costs would be for water and sewage, so then we can see throughout the years, uh, you know, what we are looking at far as the percentage of the increase as well.
Is that something that you can provide, Brian, as well?
I I I'm trying to find the model. I I don't know that I can give you a full presentation, uh, this evening on that.
I know, right, you guys have been around for quite a bit of time, and Councilman Shaw is alluding to what we used to do as it relates to, um, you know, the budget and preparation of the budget. And, um, Councilman Shaw, if you could just repeat that again as it relates to what used to kind of happen, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, we used to, you know, we used to have like, you know, if we go in, you know, from back S to, um, you know, two thousand fourteen all the way up to twenty twenty, what our rates actually look like, you know? Um, you know, I can remember back in two thousand fourteen, our water was four dollars and thirty-seven cent, ten dollars and ninety-three cent for sewage. So as we move forward throughout the years, can we show, you know, at least those breakdowns of what we're going to be actually paying so that we can look at a dollar amount of, you know, of 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 what that cost difference would be?
Yeah, I like I said, I I'm not prepared to go into that level of detail today, but I can certainly.
I know you're not prepared, but I'm just, you know, uh, wanted to put that out there like.
Yeah, we can actually put it towards the next council meeting and make sure that we have that, you know, that discussion on that presentation, Councilman Shaw. Because a good thing with, uh, Plant Moran being here, you know, they do have historical knowledge, as they've been with us since two thousand and twelve, I believe.
Yes, and we 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 definitely need that.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments at this time for for Brian or for V J as it relates to those two items? For Brian or for VJ as it relates to those two items?
Okay, Mr. Chair, um, this is Mayor Protown. If we're gonna, if you want the uh.
Mayor Proton Howard, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
But uh, Councilwoman Watley had chimed in before you.
Okay. Oh, okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead. No problem.
No worries. Councilwoman Watley?
Um, I think what I'm interested in is an actual dollar figure.
You were strong at first, Councilwoman. We heard you, then you you went out. So I don't know if you you ever.
I would like an actual dollar figure, what it's going up to, as opposed to. We understand that, but what people look at when they get their bill is that bottom line number. They don't look. Three numbers up at the top that have um. Even know what it is yet.
And and I'm sorry, I don't know if it's just me and I'm having a bad connection, but you just keep keep you keep going in. And now I think what you're basically saying is that. You want to see a number from what it was and what it's going to increase to.
And that's correct.
VJ, are the proposed rates included in the General Appropriations Act?
In the the twenty twenty two budget?
Yes.
Yeah, the most up-to-date items we have are in there.
So I think what the council's action for is, you know, for the general public, because it is water to have a. You know, for us to show them again what it was and then what it's going to. And Councilwoman Wiley, you still have the floor, but you were in and out. So I just want to make sure the number respecting your question and your comment. She's still.
Yeah, I can't hear her either.
Like I said, I just want a number.
Okay, okay. I think you said you just want a number. So let's make sure.
I want to be able to say the uh, rates are going up to twenty five dollars and eighty seven cent. If that's the case.
Correct.
Because right now they're at sixteen something. So. If we're gonna vote on a water and sewer rates, we should know what that water and sewer rate is.
That's correct. Now, VJ, I did hear you say that it is part of the actual budget. What's the what's the numbers as we're talking?
Um, I just texted Heidi real quick to find out. I need to look into it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's something we'll have to get back to you on.
Okay, I know I see Brian, we're working on it as well, so. Let's if that's in the proposed um, the budget for us to vote on.
Well, so the the. The water rates, while the revenue that they generate are included in the budget. It's really two separate motions. So you're going to be asking council to approve. The twenty-two budget in one motion. And then passing the rate increase is a separate act.
Okay.
Voting on the budget is is independent of changing the water rates.
Okay, okay. But see, I understand in that, I think that, you know, again, the council. Um, is is bringing up valid points as it relates to us us voting on something. So. We want to make sure that we have all that information. And if we need to, uh, you know, do that on the. Meeting on the twenty-first, then that's what we'll do. But, you know, I still want to make sure that we have in the discussion and going through. Now, see Jerome Bivens has his hand raised. Do you have something for us?
Yeah, so to answer everybody's question, as the mayor is correct. And Brian's correct. Tonight, you will vote on the adopted the budget for FY twenty-two. And you adopt the water rates. When you adopt the water rates, the rate should be given to you. Like last year, you voted, you know, it was sixteen seventy-five going into FY twenty-one. So the rate should be, uh, because that's what you voted on to approve that rate. So you will get a dollar figure. You should get a dollar figure tonight. Based on the formula that Plant Moran and VJ them. Put the budget together, they should come up with a dollar number to say, hey, the new water rate might be seventeen ten. And then this is the split. Five dollars for water, twelve dollars for sewer, because sewer normally is three times the amount of water. And we don't and we don't meter sewer. It's just the way the formula comes out. It is always three, around three times the amount of water. So that that answer your question, Councilwoman Wiley?
All I asked for was the number, okay? Now you said I should be getting one.
Yes.
So I'm waiting till I get one.
Yeah, but that's how you approve the water rates. You have to have enough. You have to have notice split between water and sewer. So you know what you're actually passing on to the residents.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, isn't that what I just seen?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I think that again, that's. All the way valid, all the way around, and we should have those. And I thought that it was just part of the packet in the presentation that we will be getting, obviously. Um, a hiccup happened in between, so you still have a little bit more time. So I would say that next council meeting, we have a presentation for the water rates. And the breakdown at a high level of what the water rates are. And the inclusion of, you know, sewage and any other factors. And then two. Um, you know, having an explanation, a detailed explanation, how you were saying, Brian, as it relates to. Um, not raising the water rates every every other year versus raising them each month. And it's kind of like a smooth. You know, like a smooth landing type of deal as it relates to, you know, five percent versus the twenty percent, I think, you know, showing that. It makes total sense overall to the council. So um, I would ask that, you know, this item just stay table. And then we come back to it on the twenty-first. But uh, at this point, you know, I want to make sure that we have all the information for the council to make a. You know, accurate vote.
Yep, I I agree completely, Mayor. Um, but just again, you you can vote on the budget. And ignore the water rates in that first uh, in that vote. You can pass the budget without changing the water rates. If if council approves.
Yeah, that'll be the pleasure of the council. When we get to the item, then the council, we can go from there. I think everyone on council understands that.
So then I got, then one question can I ask, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Then these rate increases is is not gonna uh, it's it's going to take an effect when? Because we we are proving a budget. Then then and in the role weight, the the water rates are not in there. Then when do we? We had to come back and increase uh, both the increase the water rates then?
Right, say if we did the budget tonight and it it got approved, contingent whatever to the water rate approval. Then we would do that on the next meeting when we have the presentation of the water rates.
Wait, as soon as council passes the water rates, the new rates. Then the next billing cycle can be adjusted with the new rates.
So it's still up to the co- it's still up to the council.
Definitely.
Councilman Williams. So before that, and I apologize, Mayor Protim, you were after Councilwoman Wiley. Did you have? Something for us?
Um, I kind of forgot what I was gonna say. Okay, so why can't maybe this week we have a um. A meeting or do everyone the consensus, everyone wants to wait to two weeks and then go over water rates with Brian? Then approve them on the same night or how we two guys want to do that? Let him do a presentation and everybody can give them their questions. And then. The following budget, the following meeting, we should be able to, we should have enough information where we can go on it. I'm not sure if that's what my council people want to do. Because I think if if we do it on the twenty-fourth, the the next council meeting. It's so long. And if people have questions and stuff, they're not going to really be, they're not going, may not understand it. And I know they're not going to vote on something they don't understand. So maybe if Brian can do a presentation for us. Um, right before that meeting and every, you know, and all the council people have their questions and concerns that they can. They can follow up with him then.
Yeah, I agree with uh, Mayor Protim on that.
Yeah, I would say I agree also too. And I think we can kill two birds with one stone because um, we still have a city clerk's um. Position that we need to deal with. And I was looking for dates tonight to set those, to set the interviews up for. Um, for those people that we will be putting forth. I'm still looking for, I know that uh, a couple of members sent me their top choices out of the twenty-nine applicants that we did have. Um, you know, I'm, I want to again, work with the council and be inclusive. At the same time, we know we have to feel the position. And it does state in the charter that the mayor has um, has the right to just present a city clerk to you all as a body. For you to, you know, interview and then to choose. But I want you guys to give me what you, you know, give me the people that you think that we should be looking at. And then we can. Take a consensus from the the whole of the body and and bring a person forward. So if we could. I don't know if we could possibly, city clerk is that? Could we do that both in one night? Could we have the water rates and the? Interview for the clerk the same day?
Yes, you could do that. I mean, it's not the pleasure of council, but I I don't see why that couldn't be done.
Yeah, so we do have, you know, uh, city, the city clerk along with uh, the H R person. On dead put forth for uh, the three candidates at the top that we were looking to interview at the same time. The council wanted to weigh in. On the other twenty-nine applicants. So if you guys want to say, okay, we're gonna go um, this week. You know, on the tenth or next week on the fifteenth. You know, I would think that would give us enough time here to get whatever presentations we need to get together, then, you know, put out to. Candidates to bring those those forefront, we'll be bringing forth uh, two two candidates so we can move this process forward.
Okay, well, I thought we was gonna get a copy, Mr. Mayor, of all of the candidates.
Councilman, Councilman Williams, you've received. And you're on the emails and me and you, we discussed this, but you received all twenty-nine applicants. So you have, you do have, you do have that. You you, we looked at it together. I showed you where you were on that email. The entire, the full body of council received all twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine applicants, with what you showed me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I I go back and look again. I I made my.
But it's up, it's up to this body. Again, I just want to move this process forward. Um, you know. You know, I know um, city clerk currently Felicia has been working with us. At the same time, she do has other obligations. And um, Malika is currently interim deputy clerk. She's working and holding everything together along with uh, Mr. Nice. But we do need a person in that office that's in charge of the clerk's office. And this body is, it's our appointment together. So I just want to make sure that we get it done.
You know, when we did this before, some years ago with uh, our city clerk Felicia Rutledge. We had Lazzanja, which was a H R person, uh, streamlined that and brought us the top candidates without counsel. Um, you know, have, you know, to trying to maneuver through twenty-nine candidates. So.
We did, we said that, Councilman Shaw, and we've done that on our end.
So so, yeah, that's, you know.
You know what you want, what you guys want to do, but we've already done that from the H R's perspective.
And and that's my recommendation as well, you know, so that we can, um, you know, move move this forward because. You know, it's 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 been going on long enough. So. That's my, that's my comments, Mr. Chair, concerning that.
Okay, well, I got two, I got two dates out there throughout there Thursday, the tenth or Tuesday, the fifteenth. Um, uh, Mr. Chair for the planning commission, do we have anything for planning on the fourteenth?
I'm not, I'm not sure yet. Um, as one of my emails uh, mentioned earlier. I haven't received the contact information for Ashley Sepita, so I haven't gotten emails about if we have a meeting or what's being conducted on that particular day. Date. I haven't gotten any cancellation either. Um, however, I was gonna ask what timeframe were you talking about? Because it may not conflict with that if you're talking about a different timeframe.
It's totally up to this, to this body. I know that, you know, some of you all work, you know, during the day, you know, so. It is, it's up to you. And I know that Ashley was in the office today, and I know that when we met with her at um, the planning commission. Meeting her and Chris both said that they would share that information, but I haven't received it as of yet either. Um, Mr. Chair, so I'm going to make sure that I get that tomorrow. So you have that, so you can talk directly to her.
Well, I'm I'm open to uh, the suggestion that has come up with. With uh, what Miss Craft had already submitted to us, which was her uh, top picks, you know. Or top suggestions, I should say, for us to look at those. But then we had the opportunity to look at the rest of the candidates as well. But I'm open to whatever is uh, accommodating to the rest of the body. I can, I can make it work. We do need somebody in there as soon as possible.
So we are, we are going with the tenth of June and then what was the other date? I'm sorry.
Um, you know, if we didn't have a planning commission meeting, we can go on the fourteenth. Um, you know, and I know Steve said, you know, it relates to what time, so possibly wouldn't conflict, you know, conflict with. Um, you know, us being able to conduct, you know, the interview and have the water waste, water rate presentation. But at the same time. You know, we will want, you know, at least on the water rates portion that uh, you all have any questions at that time. And then the general public have any questions. We want to be able to have enough time to permit that to happen. So. I would say that, you know, I don't want to have to actually have another meeting on that day that may take up time as well. So. You know, that's why I was looking at possibly that Tuesday, the fifteenth or Thursday, the tenth. Because I know on Friday, um, you know, it is several funerals within the community. That uh, Councilman Williams had mentioned earlier on with uh, that those. Family hours and things of that nature will be taking place. So.
Mr. Mayor, you said Tuesday the fifteenth or is it Monday the fourteenth? Because Tuesday the fifteenth is not a planning commission night.
Yeah, so it would be either Monday the fourteenth, if it's not a planning commission meeting, or the fifteenth on Tuesday. I could, I I could put that into an email and then let you guys chime in and say, okay, I'm good with this date, this day.
I'm good with the fifteen.
Just for clarity purposes, can you put it in the email for me?
Yeah.
And I, that way I can reply to it. And I I gotta. If you will.
Yep.
So. Okay, so we doing the tenth or the fifteenth? And they'll come through email to all council?
Right, so we're gonna do the tenth, the fourteenth, or the fifteenth. Just so again, on the fourteenth, we can have it. If we can have it on that Monday, the fourteenth, it'll just stay consistent with the Monday meeting for council. Or planning commission, but we just didn't want to, I didn't want to conflict with planning commission. Because I know typically those meetings for us will be in the evening time.
Yeah, because I I can't do the fifteenth, but I'm open for the tenth.
Okay. So it'll be the tenth or the fourteenth. But we want to give the candidates enough time to know. Yes, ma'am.
You know, looking at the uh, time construct, at the time factors that we are looking at. If we can try to get them on the tenth. And then, because we may have to come back, but we need the city clerk as soon as possible.
Okay, so the tenth?
If everybody is.
I agree.
If everybody is available for the tenth. And see if they, if Sue can reach out and see if those candidates that will, you know, are available, then make it for the tenth. Because the fifteenth, what if we have to come back? And that's prolonging it. I mean, if we can't get it done the fifteenth, then. I mean, the tenth, then we can do another one on the fifteenth.
I totally agree. All right, so June tenth, uh, time preference is six o'clock, okay with everybody or earlier? Five?
I'm available early this week, so.
It's it's five.
Till the other body.
Yeah, five, I mean, five or six is good.
I'll put five, I'll put five out there. I have Sue um, wrapped up something for us. We go from there. Fanny's still out sick. Um, so, you know, I'm gonna follow up again with her tomorrow. And see what was going on with her. Um, but at the same time, we do have Sue that's still here helping us with a lot of high level. Things every, as it relates to H R. So um, she is, yes.
Should we just forward you what we forwarded Fanny when we made our first two picks a couple of weeks ago?
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I'm gonna have Sue help formulate that and we'll get that 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 together. So we'll say June the tenth at five P M. Um, I did have a couple of calls from. A few other candidates within the community is asked asked to be considered. I'll be sending those forth to you all, and then you guys can make a determination. Um, if you want to include them. um, if you wanna include them or not at that level. All right, moving right along. Quickly, any questions on item C? Land purchase? Item D? Land purchase? Item E for the special event for, uh, the Harrison Liquor Store? All right, hearing none. I did see David. David, I know that you had sent us out some information earlier on as it relates to this open cases. Did you have anything for us tonight in closed session? You're on mute.
Yes, we have two closed session matters, the Clark matter and the Blackwell matter.
Do you guys, you wanna go in a closed session now, or you wanna take a break before seven, and then go in a closed session after, or, you know, for the meetings, up to this body?
Maybe we should do it now.
All right, let's do it now.
My thought.
David just shook his head like it should be pretty quick, so motion to go in a closed session, roll call please, uh, motion, I'm sorry, motion to go in a closed session?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Your support?
Support.
Roll call please, city clerk. You're on mute, ma'am.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisela?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
And Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
Mayor, could you ask the chief of police and/or whoever's present from the police department to also be invited to this closed session?
All right.
Could we also ensure that we have, uh, Daryl Green in this session?
All right.
Okay, Mayor, you said, uh, Daryl Green and who else?
Uh, see William Ratliff on unless Chief Riley is here. Um, Ratliff, are you representing the police off? Riley, are you, Riley, Chief Riley, you're on or Ratliff?
No, Riley is not on.
Okay, so Chief Ratliff, so bring A C Ratliff in as well, please. Okay. We have a full complement of council now, I believe. Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you to another meeting of the Inglewood City Council. Today's date is June the seventh twenty twenty-one, and the time is now seven thirty-two P M. Before we get started with the meeting, just, um, as it relates to just housekeeping things, we will have would ask that, um, as we call this meeting to order, we'll pledge allegiance to the flag. After that, we'll have a moment of silence for members of our community that have passed away this, uh, all of this past week. Community activist Samuel Ward Bay, Commissioner Yvette Brock, and Reverend Hardy Johnson Senior, which was ninety-two years old and was a pastor in our community for fifty years, and my grandfather, so. Um, we will have a moment of silence, and then after that, we will, uh, have a moment of prayer from Rick Sykes from Pastor of Preventive Church that is located at the old home, Emily on Annapolis Street, has joined our community. I did see him on here. But I don't know if we lost him during the time. But if he doesn't, if he doesn't come right in, I mean, he's not able to come right in, I don't see his hand. If, um, we can get him. Pastor Sykes, if you're on here, you can use the raise hand feature. So we can get you right in for that prayer, but I did see you there for orientation session. So if not, I would ask that, uh, Reverend Williams, that you will lead us in prayer if Rick Sykes is not there, okay? All right then, will you all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moment of silence, please, for community activist Samuel Ward Bay, Inglewood Housing Commissioner and community activist Yvette Brock, and senior pastor for Saint John Baptist Church, Reverend Hardy Johnson Senior. Thank you. And I don't see Reverend Sykes on. Reverend Williams, could you lead us in prayer, please?
Father God, we come asking you to watch over the Marie families. Father, we just come to you having, have mercy upon our hearts that we can bind ourselves together with love, unity, and strength as we conduct the business of the city of Inglewood and teach us, and so we can continue to try to make this city a city of love. Father, we love you, and we can't get along without you, in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Roll call please, city clerk.
Mayor Wimberly?
Here reporting live from Inglewood City Hall.
Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Uh, yes, here in my home in the city of Inglewood.
Councilwoman Watley?
Yes, we, um, participating remotely from my home in Inglewood, Michigan. Um, County of Wayne.
Councilman Williams?
Here at my home in the city of Inglewood, County of Wayne.
Councilwoman Washington?
Reporting remotely in my home in the city of Inglewood, County of Wayne.
Councilman Chisela?
Up here virtually from my home, Inglewood, Michigan, County of Wayne.
And Councilman Shaw?
Here in the city of Inglewood.
Mayor, we have seven presents tonight, and we do have a forum.
All right, moving right into the agenda approval of the agenda.
No move, Mr. Chair.
Your support?
What?
Any discussions outside of the items that we removed, item A under new business, back under to a previous business? Anything else? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Chisela?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
Right, motion carries, moving right along. There are no presentations, but the carries consent agenda?
No move.
Your support?
Support.
Moved and properly supported, roll call please.
Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisela?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
No.
And Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor, we have five yays.
Right, moving right along, boards and commissions. Any appointments, boards and commissions?
I just have a question, and I'm not trying to move too quick. But I would just ask, I guess at this time, I know we had received at one point in time a resume or request from Jean Hardison about being on our as a commission, and I know unfortunately, we do have a vacancy on there, so I would just ask that, take that into consideration.
Yeah, I will be bringing forth a recommendation for Inglewood Housing. I really appreciate that bringing it to our attention. And at this time, I would like to appoint, ask for appointment of Confinse Mendisa to, um, serve on the pension board. He will be replacing, um, Lorenzo, the Honorable Lorenzo Moner. Was there support for that?
Well.
The mood improperly supported, roll call, any, I'm sorry, any discussion?
Do you have to, um, is there any stipulations of being on that board, or you can just nominate whoever for the pension board? Do they understand it, or you just, you know?
Well, I think Confinse, Confinse definitely, if you look at his resume, he, he, he definitely has a hold in the grasp of that, so yeah, we would definitely, any appointments that I'll be bringing, that I will be bringing forth, we want him to have, um, knowledge of what, where they'll be serving, then also too, to be able to add additional resources. I think Confinse would be a good fit in that position.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisela?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, is there any others? I know that we're still looking for Parks and Rec appointment in District Five. Also too, we wanna get our youth engaged into the Parks and Rec system. The Parks and Rec Department is, uh, still not open as of yet, uh, fully. Um, however, um, we definitely wanna get those folks engaged, or get some young people engaged with the, um, the actual council, I mean, the you know, council appointees over at the Parks and Rec Department, or the Parks and Rec Commission. So, uh, youth, I would say appropriate in between the age of fourteen and, and, uh, twenty-four, unless this body say anything else. But I think that we need to get our youth going. So I'm looking for some appointments coming up soon. All right, hearing none, moving right along. Any other appointments? Okay, moving right along, previous business?
On the previous business is consideration and approval of the F Y twenty twenty-one budget amendment. And this needs to be removed from the table.
No move, Mr. Chair, to remove it from the table.
Your support? The mood, reported roll call please.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisela?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays to remove from the table.
All right then. So what's the next step for this?
Um, now the next step is a motion to consider to approve the F Y twenty twenty-one budget amendment.
Motion to approve F Y twenty-one, twenty-two. I mean, I mean, excuse me, I'm sorry, twenty-one.
Okay.
As it amendment, I'm sorry about that.
Four.
Okay, discussion, V J. Let's have you go first to overview what we're doing, and then any questions in the body?
Yep, so this is the, uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the six thirty twenty twenty-one budget amendments that we spent some time during, uh, the month of April talking about. Um, really what it was is, uh, we tried to incorporate the feedback from the department heads consider where we think the numbers will end up as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and then incorporate the feedback from council during, um, during our study sessions. Um, so what we're looking for here is for council to approve the, uh, first page of this file, the summary of budget amendments that you typically approve each year. Um, and in short, the, uh, the effect on the general fund is that we're looking at the general fund to end up right around forty-nine thousand. Um, that's our estimate for the ending fund balance based on the adjustments that we made, which is a net favorable hundred and thirty-five thousand in adjustments between the, uh, the, the net of the revenues and expenditures.
Okay, Brian, did you have anything to add to that? You're on mute. Here you go.
Yes, Mayor, um, so this budget amendment, and we've been talking about this for several months now, and you're now within three weeks of the end of your fiscal year, so at this point of the year, the budget amendment is really only accomplishing one thing. It is getting you near or to compliance with the State Budget Act. Because come audit time, when the auditors, uh, conduct the audit, the financial statements on the budget to actual schedule, if you have spent in excess of the amended budget, you will get a, uh, non-compliance finding for violating the Budget Act. So at this point in time, the process of amending the F Y twenty-one budget is only about getting the expenses in line with the budget, or rather, the opposite, getting the budget in line with the expenses that have already happened to date and will happen in the last couple of weeks of this fiscal year. So, uh, failure to pass this amendment is going to result in additional compliance findings. Uh, passing the budget amendment at this point doesn't guarantee that you're not gonna have the same findings, because there will be expenses over the next several weeks, and then that will, uh, invoices that will be received over the summer and through the audit that get accrued back into the fiscal year, so it's still possible that there could be a, a non-compliance finding come the audit, but you, you really need to pass this amendment in order to attempt to avoid that finding. It's not, uh, not passing this amendment will not change any of the expenses the city occurs in the last couple of months of the fiscal year.
Okay, council. Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call please, city clerk.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisela?
No.
Mayor Paul Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley?
No.
Mayor, we have four yays and two nays.
Motion carries, moving right along, next item.
Item B under, uh, previous business to be removed from the table is consideration and approval of the F Y twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two budget appropriations and water and sewer rates.
What's your pleasure, council? I know that we had talked about possibly leaving this item, but it's up to you. Go ahead, Brian, what do you have for us?
Um, so obviously, I can't do this. It would take a member of council, but the water rates should be struck from the motion. The water rates are not, uh, to be passed today. Um, all that we would be, all that we are requesting that you consider is the, uh, the proposed budget and budget only for F Y twenty-two. Um, there is some, uh, there's additional capital projects that we need to have a, a very thorough discussion. Management needs to have a thorough discussion uh, about whether to pursue those projects, and if you do them, are you gonna finance them through rates or bonding or some other source? So that discussion needs to occur internally before rates can be brought to the city council. But the budget itself as presented But the budget itself as presented does not include all of those major capital projects. So the budget as presented is still valid and could be considered by council this evening.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, council.
So we just have to rework the action, the item, action to include the budget, the budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two without the water rates. And then, once we include that in there, then, once we pass, if the budget is passed, they know that it's passed with or without the water rates being included. So we just have to add that in the language.
Yes, ma'am, are you going to make that motion?
Okay, I make a motion on the consider to approve the approval of FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget appropriations without the water and sewer rates.
There's support?
There's support.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a question. Now, I know that there were some concerns about the AT&T amount dollars. Do we have anything that's related to that from the city attorney? I know it was supposed to be pushed off to the city attorney, but do we have anything different from that standpoint? Or any, any news from, from, from that discussion?
I'm trying, so, so does, VJ, you understand what he, what he's saying? I know that it's like two separate issues, so I know that, and let me say that, so we'll be clear. So we're directing the city attorney, I know that he had correspondence with the previous IT director as it relates to AT&T overcharging us. However, it, it was minimal as we looked at the emails between the attorney and the former IT director, it was minimal. So as we're moving forward now, we're actually moving forward with the attorney. So we're going to direct the attorney as a body to look at the matter for AT&T as it relates to them overcharging us for ninety-two ports and we've only been using forty-two ports. So I know that that's one issue. Now, the other issue that you're speaking on, is it a overcharge? Is that what you're saying for AT&T or was a balance that was out of whack for AT&T? What, what is for, for the, you know, as it relates to the budget itself? I'm trying to understand what are you saying?
If, if there's any, you know, any of those monies are going back to this, this budget here? Or are we going to be able to resolve that to, you know, either cut or have some revenue that's come from that?
Yeah, I think it's a litigious matter. I know that we did receive some rebates under the previous IT director and working with AT&T when he brought the issue up. This issue actually spans back to two thousand and eighteen. And, you know, we're looking to, now with the direction, you know, this body. So all of us are clear and on the same page that all that information is being sent to the attorney. Any information that you have as it relates to AT&T and dealings with the previous IT director, Phineas Cody, we want to make sure he has all of that information so he then can turn and formulate something to AT&T and saying what was happening. Because right now, nothing has actually happened outside of us saying that it was handed to the attorney. The attorney had some correspondence, but at the same time, the attorney's on the line, I don't have to speak for him, but just, you know, just a high level overview of what we've been talking about and what, you know, we wanted to have happen. So tonight, I wanted to make it clear to this body that we would have to direct him as a body because, or you direct me to direct him, however, he works for us as a, as a whole attorney. So I want to make sure that we're, that we're doing what we're supposed to do in, in order. And I'm not just saying to him, go after AT&T. So, and this is what we want to do, go ahead, VJ.
And councilman, I think you're, you're referring to, do we have any of those additional revenues that we may get from the litigation with AT&T, right? You're, you're saying that, is that in this budget? So one of the things we want to avoid doing in an effort to be conservative when we do this is we want to consider, is something estimable and probable? And, and when you're dealing with litigation, that's very hard to do unless there is something that is, you know, hard and fast, like this is what you're going to get. So that's something we wouldn't want to include in this in an effort to be more conservative.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir, please, Councilmember Chair.
My inquiry on that was the simple fact that, yes, it was in litig, from my understanding, it was in litigation and that because, like I've stated before and I've stated publicly here, multi-billion dollar corporations such as AT&T, they do not cut checks, but they will provide you discounted rates and stuff like that for mistakes on their behalf or if there was some type of misunderstanding to keep you as a customer. And so when I saw that in the budget, that they were requesting in an amendment of like a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars or something like that, because AT&T bills have been paid, my inquiry was, well, what happened? Because we were told it was in litigation. We never got any updates from the city attorney's office about it or anything. And all this said on the budget amendment was that we lost the discounts. And I wanted to know how, why, what, where, when, and all of that. I didn't get any of that, we didn't get any of that. So that was my pushback on it with that. And going forward, because the new budget is here now, and like you said, that started last year in twenty twenty and we're talking about a new budget and we're still litigating what's going on when something was spoken of before. I know we've changed account managers and all of that stuff and it could get lost in translation. But that was my quarrels with it as to, you know, everything that was going on. That's why I did send that correspondence to everybody, but we never got any feedback. So that's why I was against it.
Got you, and I think that, I mean, you, you, you're right, I mean, you know, as it relates to just having a clear understanding of what was going on. You know, again, talking to our attorney, like, you know, Mayor, I haven't even, I haven't done anything with it as it relates to that. Just because, you know, I was looking for some stuff from Mr. Cody to give to us that I'd never, that he never received. Again, he can speak for himself, he's on the line, but I wanted to make sure that, you're right, Steve, they're not just going to, I mean, sorry, Councilman Chisholm, they're not just going to write us a check. We need to make sure that we put everything in writing, everything that has happened. Because this was from two thousand and twelve that, you know, they've been billing us for lines that we haven't used or weren't even set up to use in the beginning. So once it was, you know, caught, we looked at it to see how we could remedy it. Mr. Cody had several correspondents with AT&T directly. So now this body, again, so it's not that we hear that it's in litigation or that it, something was going on, we'll be, we'll be directing, if no one's against it, attorney to formulate something based off of the correspondence that we do have from Mr. Cody and AT&T and then push it towards, you know, the AT&T as a corporation, whatever we need to do. I want to make sure that we have an understanding of what we're doing and not just going, saying that we're in litigation or we're not or we're talking about litigation and we're not. Is that the direction of this body so we can have the attorney do that?
Yes, I would like them to be pushing back against AT&T Corporation on services that were not utilized by the city of Inkster in an effort to save us money in the IT service department.
Correct. Yes, definitely for that, okay. I know everybody, if nobody's against it, I think that we'll move that forward right away. And David, he hears his marching orders, so we'll make sure we put that in writing for the entire cosmetic body, body to have that information and what we're doing. All right, any other questions or comments as it relates to the motion?
And Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, this motion is to be, is to remove off the table and then we'll do the approval.
Correct. All right, motion please, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, roll call please.
Councilmember Wiley?
I'm sorry, ma'am, could you say what the motion is again?
The motion, motion is to remove from the table, consideration and approval of FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget appropriations without the water and sewer rates.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Mayor Tim Howard? Mayor Tim Howard?
She's on mute, you're on mute, ma'am.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries, next.
The next motion is for consideration and approval of FY twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two budget appropriations without the water and sewer rates.
Their motion?
Some of.
Removed improperly supported and just for discussion on my end for the water and sewer rates. We will be having a presentation on June the tenth at five PM from Plant Moran as it relates to the water and sewer rates. All right, any questions, comments as it relates to this request for approval?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I know I had some concerns the first day that we went on and I had told the body my concerns for this budget. And then I emailed VJ and he responded, applied back to him. I just replied, not knowing that my colleagues were not on there, but then, you know, said it was kind of too late to do that because we didn't have the motion, we didn't have the consent of the council. But I'd just like to just tell you what I'm concerned about. Did we appropriate any money to the fire department to get the bathrooms fixed? Because I wasn't for sure if we did or not, and that was one of my concerns.
We removed that again, just in, in the effort of knowing that there is a application for an FDCBT grant that went in on May seventeenth. And, I'm pulling the line up here, I think it was, in total, they were looking for four hundred and twenty thousand, some component of that was the bathroom, if I'm remembering. But we removed those amounts because, I mean, the way that this budget's sitting, we need to make a budget that is showing progress. And this is not to say that those are not important things, but what I think needs to be done is we apply for those grants, we see what happens, and then if at that point that that doesn't come through for the city, we consider a budget amendment at that point. So it's not to say that this can't happen, but I do think we need to show that we are making an effort to constrain our spending.
Okay, so now, on that note, another item that I had, I had a whole lot of them. There was not justification in the police department of holiday pay for the number, the dollar amount that was there, which was a hundred and seventeen thousand. I never got justifications to say, do we have any, how many sworn officers included in that? Because from what I'm seeing, we didn't have enough officers to make that dollar amount possible. So I want a clarification, do we have enough sworn officers for that dollar amount? Because it went up, it was last year with sixty something, then they changed it to eighty something because there's a, you know, they gave out some. But we hired, think three officers, I'm not sure how many we hired, but I didn't see any justifications of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and I'll deal with clarifying on that. And I also wanted to know, due to our budget constraints, I don't think any salary employee should be getting this at this time. I wanted that out as well. So, but I'm not sure what happened, but can you explain to me about that hundred and seventeen thousand? Where, where did we get from sixty something or eighty something thousand dollars to a hundred and seventeen thousand? How did we get to that?
Yeah, that's based off the, it's calculated off the number in the PCS and that's what I'm pulling right now.
Okay, thank you, VJ.
Yep, so it is, I think we have the additional headcount over last year. And I think last year, there were sixty-seven in the budget. It ended up, it'll end up being, let me pull this up real quick. In holiday pay, we're expecting it'll be around eighty-seven thousand. So there is the increase from last year based on, there's additional headcount. We are including the holiday pay for the chief and assistant chief. And then it's based off the new rates of pay.
Yeah, but VJ, also too, if you, if you look back at the budget, starting from, you know, what we can see from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, the number of a hundred and seventeen thousand was there for coming from Plant Moran as it relates to the headcount, the total headcount in the PD. So that number was put forth by Heidi and as it was explained to me, and Brian's on the line right now, that in an effort to be transparent and not have to come back for a budget amendment, and, and I, and I appreciate how you said that, Mayor Protem, active police officers. I think that's what we based it off of when Darren did the budget last year. It was the active personnel for the holiday pay. So even though that number was there for a hundred and seventeen thousand for the recommendation coming from the PD through Heidi for the PNS report, then we came back and said, okay, the mayor's recommended budget because these are the active officers that you have. This is how much that we're, you know, going to put into that line item to balance the budget. But then we would have to come back for an amendment if we hired another person on. So I think that's where you get that hundred and seventeen thousand from.
Okay.
At the same time, like you said, active. So I'm willing to, if, you know, again, I'm willing to recommend that we go with the active number of officers, VJ. As it relates, again, as I want to say, in, in this public body, if we're talking about the chief of police and the assistant chief of police and their holiday pay, they received it, as I've shown this body before, in check stubs, they received it every year for the last five years. We didn't talk about it last year in the budget like this, saying that, you know, different personnel should be taken out. But talking to, again, the attorney along with the chief of police and the AC, we would need to go into closed session to talk about this, to see, you know, as it relates to, you know, their holiday pay and, you know, what they're willing to give up, because they haven't said publicly that they're just willing to give it up as of, as of yet. So.
I can go with that then, will we take that line item out of the budget for tonight then, until we talk about it? I'm willing to do that, I'm not going to prove that with that in there, that's what I'm saying. Because we are in a financial strain right now and if you cutting, I don't see this budget being cut at all. But you cut our little dollar amount in our, in our, in our budget for, for going to school. I know you say you was going to put some of it back, I don't even know if it's back or not. But the, in, in the police contract is holiday pay for union sworn officers. I don't see anything about administrative. And if we did do that, that's fine, but I'm looking in the fire department's budget, they're not, he's not getting it. You know, the administrations is not getting it. So that's something that we need to talk about because if we can't do for one, we should not do for any of them until we get this budget there. But that's, and I'm, but I'm okay if that's what we can do. But as of right now, I don't see we trying to cut anywhere. And, and I have said that last administration, I've been fighting for that for a long time. But I didn't have anybody fighting with me, so don't say that it wasn't said because it was.
Oh, I didn't say that.
But no, but I understand what you're saying, but that would be my recommendation for me to pass this budget tonight. Because even, and even in the fire department, even if they're going to get a grant, like VJ said, we can come back for a budget amendment to make, to make that happen, to get the bathrooms fixed. I'm okay with that. If we stick to that, and if he does not get a budget grant, then we still, we're going to have to do a budget. So that's something that we're going to have to keep tabs on. But for, and it's like the hundred seventeen thousand, like you said, that's not even counting all of that. We don't even have enough sworn officers for that. So I'm willing for you to do that, but at the same time, if this body, it has to be all of us, you guys, this not me. It's, it has to be everybody making, well, wait a minute, hold on, I'll be done.
I mean, cut you off, ma'am, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, but it has to be all of us on the same line here, whether we like each other or not. We got to make sense of stuff. So if we can't do for, and if, you know, just put yourself in other people's shoes. And if people, if people are getting something and I'm doing almost the same job and we're not getting it, what would you, what would you think? That's why, that's why we have us here to make sure things are being, is being. That's why, that's why we have us here to make sure things are being, is being fair. And by us, and right now, being fair is, we are in trouble as far as our budget. So we can't live like we was living off our three million dollar budget, we don't have it. So things have to come in. And that's all I'm saying, but we all have to be on the same page, but that's all I have to say on that, so go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I was just saying, I know that um, you, you have mentioned, you've mentioned, you made mention of that, that you've been fighting it for a number of years. And, you know, from my understanding with this matter, it came up because of uh, some pension matters and some, some, some raises at the time. So I think, you know, i- it happened in closed session, not with this council body, with the previous council body. So I think it's important for us to get back to the table as a group and talk about it. Because one thing that I can say, you know, while, you know, I am over the administration, I work directly with each administrator, and they all work hard, and they all have uh, several hats on. The chief of police and the A C are on the frontline as sworn police officers, and they're in their vehicles. And they're out in the streets, working directly with our community, trying to keep us all safe. So I know, you know, i- i- it's definitely a, a savings. However, I think that, you know, as we talk about it, you know, we have to be fair on what's, what's really happening across the board. Um, you know, they, they are working the holidays, they're working the weekends. So, you know, I know that it was an agreement that was struck before I got here, so I need to hear all that historical information. Bring the chief, the A C in, and we all talk together. But I just wanted to put that out into the general public that they are serving on the holidays as well. So, um, yeah, that's, that being said, uh, any other questions or comments?
Ms. Ms. Chair, I think, you know, it is, it is something that we definitely need to, to have a conversation on so that we can look at, you know, what, what is fair, what is across the board, what is necessary, and what is not necessary. Because we definitely do need to cut the fat. I mean, we, we understand that, uh, this is a budget that we, 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 we're taking, you know, all hands on deck to look at. So if it's something that we can have a conversation with, and we can hash this out and negotiate, you know, that's going to be in best interest of the community in this budget, w- we ought to be, we ought to be doing it, and I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, I think the number is, what is it, uh, forty seven hundred a, a person, V J, for the police chief?
Around that.
So, so we definitely want to look at, we want to balance that out too. Because, you know, even when we talked about the consent agreement and going down to, you know, having sworn officers uh, at fifteen dollars an hour with no benefits during that time, you get what you pay for. So, you know, I want to make sure that we clear on that too, as we're talking together as a body. Um, you know, we want to take care of our people to the best of our ability. Um, you know, however, you know, at the end of the day, I understand the bottom line, again, like I, I've said before, that I'm, I'm in a unique position because I was on council when the consent agreement was um, was being undertaken. Um, I was one of the people that actually initiated the review to come in, and I was working for the Inster Public School District under the Emergency Financial Management. So I understand what needs to be done, and I'm willing to do that. But at the same time, I don't want to sacrifice service or morale within the organization. So we get a, a possible incident like we ha- end up with uh, Floyd Dent, and I'm just putting that out there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, but you know, the thing is that we have to talk about it, let's get in closed session and talk about what has been done in previous years.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, so that we will all have an understanding of what has happened, because I know some things cannot be talked about in an open session.
Correct.
Well, we definitely want to get into closed session, and then, you know, the council can bring a motion to make in an adjustment to the budget. So, you know, we can also have that as well. So we're not, you know, I want my, 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 my colleagues to understand, we're not, and I, and I'm sure that they know that we're not hogtied. You know, if we need to make adjustments to the budget, we can bring forth that uh, a motion to, to make that uh, removal of the budget. So we're not, we're not constrained, you know, so if we need to, we, we would definitely do that. But we need to come and have an understanding in closed session for what has happened from the past into right now. And you may mention about, you know, the police officers not having benefits. I know, I went through that, I was there on council, and it was a tough decision, you know, but it wasn't, it wasn't to be concrete. We were going to have movement, but we're going to have movement conservatively. You know, we couldn't just jump out and spin, you know, everything, you know. So I understand the morale, and we need that because, as you know, we have had several situations over in my, in my area, so we definitely don't want to tank that.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, and I have one more thing to say, and I'm done with this. When we talk about morale, uh, we talk about sworn officers that's in the union, they have a contract, that's not what we talking about. So this, I'm not talking about the people in the union, I'm talking about salary. So salary, we do have more control over salary than we do the union. Okay, so any, because I'm a union woman, I'm a, I'm a union woman, I understand the union. So that, I'm not speaking on them. So I'm not talking about the whole organization in the police department, I'm talking about salary workers.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm speaking on.
Yes, ma'am.
And, 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 and then it doesn't, and, and when we sit here and we talk about who's outside, who's on the roll, you know, when stuff happens, I mean, the fire department, D P S controls a lot of our stuff, they, they out there too. That's what I'm saying, so we need to be conscious of what we say on here. And like you said, go to the table in closed session and we'll talk about this. But if that's what this body want to do, I want to, I want to strike that down, that, 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 that line item out of the budget for right now, until we do have a conversation.
Yeah.
Only for the salary, and I'm not talking about uh, uh, U A W, I'm talking about salary members.
Well, I, can I say something, Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
I, I think it's more, it's a more issue, and what she's talking about is a lot of issues that we have brought up. Uh, uh, basically, and that was the purpose of us putting together the finance committee to sit down with the treasurer and then come back. Okay, I mean, we, we can find many things that we might be dissatisfied in, but uh, what I understand of that is important that we pass this budget. Uh, that we get a budget to the state, am I correct, Brian? I mean, explain to me, you know, because I know we pushing this to the end. And so, you know, we can always, we probably be creating the finance, the finance uh, committee, me, me and Brother Shaw and and, and the treasurer and stuff that will be meeting. Okay, on a lot of issues, you know, and I know a lot of us can sit here and have many issues about things in the budget. But somehow we got to get a budget passed, it's got to go to this land soon, am I correct, State?
The budget's not submitted to the state, you just have to pass it within the city by June thirtieth.
Okay, see, this is, you know, so we can always come back and make amendments to the budget, uh, is what I'm saying, Kim. And I understand your points that you got, I think that we should pass it and then come back and make the amendments uh, during the months and get the chance to see what we really, figures that we really have.
Yeah, and I understand, I understand you, I understand your point.
Yeah, I, I think that we got it, we're putting the finance committee out there, uh, as, as the councilman, ma- mayor and the treasurer, that we can sit back and um, look at the situation and then come back with some recommendations.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, to, 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 uh, to Councilman Williams, we do need to pass a budget, but I'm not going to pass something that I don't like. So once you pass it, it's a done deal, okay? That's what I'm trying to tell my council people, you know, and we had opportunities after opportunities to go in. I made recommendation, shout, uh, whoever else made recommendation, Chisholm made recommendation. We didn't hear from anybody, so we don't know what anybody is thinking. But you just can't sit here and say, we got to pass the budget because if there's something in there that someone doesn't like, that's what we bring it to the table for. And if you looked at my previous motions on the budget, I have not been passing it because it's something in there that I don't like. But if I don't get the consensus of the council, or nobody else says anything, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a dead duck. That's why I vote the way I do. So we need to have more meetings to find out why, why any council person have uh, uh, a problem with something in this budget. We don't open our mouths and say anything. You say, well, I have a problem with something, but we need to continue that, that's what we here for, discussions, we don't have that. So I don't know what anybody's uh, what other people are feeling on this budget because we don't email each other. We put it out there, but we don't get any responses. So I'm just putting that out there, but you don't just pass a budget because we got to pass it. Because then that means, if we, but if we do that, that means we have no say so over the budget. And if we just continue to pass it without saying anything, that mean we don't.
What's in the budget that you can't go back and amend the budget, uh, Kim?
Once you pass money, amendments is, is something you spend more money on. That's the difference, an amendment is if we pass the budget, if we pass uh, councils, uh, amendment if we get a raise, if council gets a raise, that's an amendment. That because that's more money than we approved in the budget, that's what an amendment is. But you can't pass a budget and then do an amendment to take it back. Now, you can't do that.
Not necessarily taking it back, Mayor Pro Tem, but if, if things come up where we can adjust the budget, you know, this body can call a meeting to, 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 to handle that.
We've never done that before ever, when we came in there and took money back. So, well, then, I'm not going to start doing it that way. I mean, I know that we can do a whole lot of stuff, but amendments is more money that they use that we approve for. It's not amendment, oh, I'm, oh, I approved it now, but we're going to take it back, that's not an amendment.
Well, what, what, what you explained, what, what are you trying to get out of the budget right now in order to try to pass this budget? What are you trying to take out of the budget?
You know what, this, this, I already said that, I emailed people, I've told people what my concerns is, I'm not going to do it tonight. I mean, I do it, and I'm not going to do it tonight. I mean, because I'm just going over and over what I've said, I just told them. I just said the bathrooms for the, for the fire department, and I said the holiday pay that I had a concern with. And, and I said that the first time when Brian submitted this to us, I'm not going to repeat it again.
So wouldn't that be appropriate if we go out, if we, if we go down and go back to review our budget and, and, and come up with, with the type of money that we know that we can spend over there in the fire department and, and, and for the repairs over there?
Yeah, let me, let's, let's get a little bit of order going, and let me ask, I heard V J. V J was trying to chime in there, it's like double dutch going on there, so V J, go ahead and get in there.
I was going to say, I, there does exist the opportunity to make a budget adjustment, like a favorable one to expenses where you decrease the uh, what the budgeted line item is. So I mean, that exists, now I know.
Right, V J?
What's that?
With the, with the amendments, we did, so we had some favorable.
Yep, so the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget adjustments are a, a great example of that. Now, I do understand what Mayor Pro Tem Howard is saying, it is difficult in this situation to do that. So i- if we're thinking about this, um, like Mayor Pro Tem Howard, like what today would make you the most comfortable? I don't know if we are able, I don't even know if it's an op- o- option to vote on the rest of the budget less one line. I don't know how that, you know, works or anything like that. Um, but I'm, I'm just throwing ideas out there, Brian and Mayor, I'd need your input on this. Um, but, but I want to make sure that people are heard on that line. I don't want that to be the one sticking point that prevents us from getting over a large hurdle, and that's why I ask.
Brian?
But.
Brian?
I have participated in, in council meetings in other cities where there have been individual line item issues that have been problematic for certain members of council to vote on. And they would prefer to vote yes on the budget as a whole if they could just change one particular line item. So uh, city attorney, i- if the city attorney disagrees, then, then I'd certainly would, would follow his lead. But I have been a part of meetings where they've said, all right, before we vote on the meeting, let's, if anyone has an issue and they want something removed, then a, a member of council can propose that something gets scratched. Council then takes roll call vote on scratching that item. And if it fails, if the scratch fails, the item stays in. And when i- if it passes, that item comes out, then the number will change. Now, that means that someone has to take very good notes what's getting scratched. So that when you get to the end and then council votes on what's left as a whole, that becomes your uh, pro- your approved beginning budget for the next fiscal year.
Well, that's just what I just asked her to do, give us what you want to scratch and let us move on. I mean, if it passes, it passes, if it don't, okay, that's exactly what I just got to asking her. Okay, she said she got a couple issues that she's holding up the, holding up the minimum of the budget, then tell us what they are. She said she been saying it and been saying it, I understand some of the things she said. Some of it I agree, some of it I don't, okay, but see, now we down to, we have to get the budget passed. So let's discuss the matter and just scratch what's got to be scratched.
Ms. Chair.
We all agree.
Well.
All right, all right, okay, okay, go ahead, go ahead, I heard uh, Councilman Washington trying to jump in there, and then uh, Councilman Chisholm, you'll be up.
No, I was just, I was just going to ask, if Kim make that motion, would council be able to vote on it? Where if, if a, a line item wants to be removed, then, I mean, I know we keep speaking about consensus of council. Is there a way to do that based on that line item?
Yeah, well, I'll let, I'll let Brian answer that.
I mean, that might be.
They just seem like they're just cut down the commotion.
Yeah.
Well, and what you can do is, um, I mean, if there's enough votes to pass the budget as is, an amendment can be brought at the very next meeting, even before the end of the fiscal year to change it. So I guess, I mean, it's up to council at this time if they want to uh, just vote on the whole thing as is, or if a member of council wants to make a motion to scratch a particular line item.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Chisholm first and then Councilman Shaw.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilman Chisholm.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chair, through the chair to Councilman Washington, that is what Brian has stated earlier, that it with, and that's what we do all the time, we make amendments to the particular uh, motion that's on the floor. Whether the person, whoever makes it first, makes that motion to scratch something out of it, if it gets accepted by council, it's accepted and we move forward. And then if it doesn't, it dies, and we bring the motion back to the table. However, that causes for a long deliberations in one particular meeting. Um, and, and to the mayor, council, representatives from Plant Moran, Mr. Treasurer and the city attorney. That was one of the reasons why when I spoke about what I spoke about in our past council meetings with amendments and different things taken out of the budget, I submitted it to everybody via email for the simple fact that not to deliberate, but so that you could read what I submitted. And if you had any additions, or if you had any suggestions or recommendations or disagreement, it was there in a mass platform for all of us to communicate on, so we can understand each other and not necessarily get to the council meeting and deliberate it, and not understand where anybody is going. Um, my quarrel with where we are right now is basically everything that I submitted didn't get a response to. Um, Councilman Wiley responded the other day to some stuff, but other than that, I don't even know if the rest of my colleagues read anything. When I looked at the stuff that the treasurer sent us and the uh, the email about the F Y twenty two budget, and I saw my name there, I saw Councilman Shaw's name there, and I saw the mayor's name there, I didn't see anybody else's name for suggestions that they put into the budget. It looks as if you all are ready to pass and just move forward. Plant Moran has given us two presentations, one in February of twenty twenty and one of this year, and told us, if we continue spending in this capacity, we will be in the red within eight to twelve months. And so here we are again deliberating, some are ready to pass it as is, some are ready to mo- remove one thing, but nobody's talking about adding additional revenue to the budget so we can boost the public safety sector, or so we could keep people on and everything like that, everybody's talking about cut, cut, cut. We are killing the morale in the city of Inster for employees because people are saying, hey, I can make more money in a different city if I go do this job. And we aren't doing anything to save the budget, except we got to pass it before June thirtieth. So those are my quarrels with the budget. I haven't heard any other suggestions from anybody, the email or particularly at the council meeting except for whom I've stated. And if I have not, I apologize for me not hearing it, maybe it wasn't formal enough or, or whatever you want to call it. Those are my quarrels, and that's why I, again, I'm not in support of the budget amendment, which I voted no against, and I'm not in support of the budget currently as it is. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I yield the floor.
All right, uh, Councilman Shaw.
Now, we have, we have spent, I don't know, I mean, I don't even know how, what, what, what we can do with this. I mean, we're not hogtied.
I don't know, I mean, I don't even know how, what, what, what we can do with this. I mean, we're not hogtied. To it, we can come back if we need to make adjustments to the budget. But we spent numbers of months talking about these things line by line. So if there was any additional things that we needed to add on to, we could have done it in those meetings, in any additionals that we need to subtract, we could have done in those meetings. So, you know, now we at the point where it's before us, what do you wanna do? Now, we, we should have the closed session with, so we can get an understanding of what's going on with these holidays pays, because we know that that has happened in times past. Let's do that. Do we want to, you know, adjust that right now? I would rather pass the budget right now. Let's go into closed session. So then we can be able to talk about it. And if we do need to make those adjustments and pull back, then we do that. But we have went through this budget line by line. And only those have come up with things that was after the fact that we could have easily put into the budget. I didn't see anything that was going to be any, any plus on, you know, really that was gonna put us over or really take us away from what we need to do in the budget. So you wouldn't get a response from me because we have already went through those things in the budget. And I'm satisfied with those things based on the things in which we have went through that we could have subtracted or added to the budget. And we had those conversations. I looked through it. I looked at it line by line. The guy had already put it, uh, uh, in color code for us, whether it was favorable, unfavorable. So that's where I'm at on the budget. So, you know, I want my colleagues to be satisfied. Mayor Pro Tim, I want you to be, you know, have some type of, uh, satisfaction in this budget so that we can move it forward. Even my other colleagues, I want you to be satisfied with the budget. From what I saw, uh, you know, and how I looked through it from times past, I think it's, you know, it's something that we should be able to move on. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, hold on one second, Mayor Pro Tim. It's, um, um, Councilman Williams and then you can go.
Okay. I'll tell you what. Okay. We got to June the thirtieth. Am I correct? Nobody seemed like you satisfied with the amendment budget. So let's schedule some meetings. Let's go around the clock until we can get, until we can come up with amendment to this, okay? We set up council meetings until we could, we can come up with an agreement, okay? Don't say, we can't sit here and keep saying that we, 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 we don't wanna pass this budget and, and, and this amendment budget and then we gotta turn around here and we got to have it passed by June the thirtieth. So I ain't got nothing but time, okay? If you, if y'all not satisfied and you wanna keep passing it on until we come up with an agreeable budget, okay, I'm ready. Okay?
Add to that, this is a working document. So once we pass it again, we, you know, we're not just stuck with, with it. It is our responsibility as the council, we are the fiduciaries, myself included, of the city. So, you know, with the finance committee, with this body, you know, because we are the body that's actually over the budget expenditures and that for the city, we can come back. So, um, you know, I know the question is on the floor, you know, whether it's.
The thing about it is.
But, but, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I, you know, I know we definitely wanna move on, but we have been talking about this issue for the last few months. Let's see, Brian, go ahead, Brian. I don't wanna step on Councilman Williams.
That's what, that, that, that's, that's, that's what I see. Every time we look around there.
Go ahead, Council.
About their complaints and then you turn around and say you wanna move the meeting on, okay? Okay, you wanna move the meeting on, spread it some more, and whatever issues gotta come to the table, let's iron them out. Let's iron them out because certain people saying this on one half, then they come back with something else and they're not just, let them, li- list every issue that they have and let's go through them. All of the Chisholm got, Howard got, Sandra, Shaw, myself, all of them, just list them and go through them. And come to agreement. You can't move it on, you keep moving on and all this stuff still gonna be sitting around the table until we can issue, deal with the issue.
Go ahead, Vijay.
No, I was gonna say though, like, listing out the issues, that was the purpose of the emails and there were specific requests at the study sessions, at the council sessions via email, if we could receive that feedback via email. And we did get from a, a couple of council members. But inherently, the, the reality is if we get an email from someone, one individual, one council member who says, I want this ten dollars removed, but we don't get feedback from others, we're now left to think that only one person feels this way about something. We can't, I, I don't want to remove something based on input from one person. And so that's the tricky part. Like when we were sending those emails out, we needed the feedback.
So.
Go ahead, Brian.
Go ahead.
Let Brian go ahead and then go ahead, Brian.
Uh, so Councilman Williams makes a, a great point. There, there is time to do more things before June thirtieth. However, you're losing your city treasurer this week. So he's taking the institutional knowledge of this entire process with him. And your new treasurer who's gonna be starting has, I, I don't know if this is his first or second meeting that he's been on the call for, but he hasn't been a part of all these conversations. So my recommendation is for the sake of complying with the state budget act, vote on the budget today. But to Councilman Williams' point, you have additional meetings where, whether it's at the next regularly scheduled meeting, or if you choose to have a special meeting, so be it. It doesn't necessarily have to be before June thirtieth, but have those individual points of contention brought up as a budget amendment. Discuss it and then take a vote to, to scratch it from what you hopefully approve today. And then those actions can then be, uh, executed by the, uh, by management. But you'll, you'll satisfy the requirement today of being, having a passed budget ready to go before the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay. So what I, 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 so I think what I do is I'll make a motion to pass the budget without salary workers getting holiday pay. And then if they pass that, then they go back to the table and we can talk. I pay, I, I do, I put that motion out there. I make a motion to pass the budget without salary workers getting holiday pay.
Is there support? Is there support? Hearing none motion feel? Is there another motion?
I'll make the motion that we, it, it'd be contingent on the, on the conversation that we have.
So ma- make that clear.
I'll make the motion that we, we pass the budget contingent on those items that council may have to come back to make adjustments for.
Is there support?
What?
Support.
Been moved and properly supported discussion. Hearing none roll call, please, City Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard? No. Councilmember Chisholm?
No.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have three yays and three nays and I will need your vote.
There's a question from my colleagues, you know, for those on the opposing side, can I say that? Can I say, I mean, so why doesn't those, if, if, if any of you wanna clarify, I mean, we talked about the contingencies. We just spent over thirty minutes talking about this. Um, is it a reason? Anybody wanna chime in?
Not sure this is appropriate.
Well, yeah, well, yes then. Yes, yes. All right, motion carries. Move right along. All right, next item, please.
Item number, um, which has been moved up to item number eight is consideration and approval of Michigan Indigent Defense Commission grant.
I have a question on that.
Okay, we need a, we need to, we can get to a discussion. Do we have a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
There's support?
Support for discussion.
Okay, um, before we get to discussion, Vijay, for the general population, can you explain to, to us what this is that we have before us?
Yep. So the state of Michigan has certain requirements, uh, relating to, uh, providing legal services to those who can't necessarily afford it. Um, in an effort to stay compliant with the rules and, uh, the regulations they have relating to that. Uh, municipalities incur certain costs. And so this grant, what this grant does is it says, um, they're willing to reimburse us for a certain amount of those costs. Um, so we had a minimum spend amount and then they reimburse us, uh, a, a certain amount as well. And those are the numbers that you'll see on page nineteen in the packet. So, uh, the budget here is ninety-nine thousand five hundred. And the state, once we, if we show we hit our forty-five thousand nine forty-five, we'll get reimbursed on the backend for the fifty-three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and eight cents. Um, and the, the expenses within this are, uh, they vary a bit, but the, the judge puts forth what the ex- expected costs are and what they specifically relate to. And you, you're supposed to stay within the confines of what you specifically requested as the budget. Um, and this is something we had last year. Um, Tracy helps oversee this for us and she, uh, she performs the filing for it. So, and David has his hand up. He may be able to even better explain this.
Yeah, the Michigan Indigent Defense Council is established by statute by the governor's office uh, in two thousand and thirteen. And essentially what they're doing is they're trying to standardize uh, criminal defense in all of the jurisdictions in and around Michigan. So everyone, basically the, the majority of the budget goes to people who go to court in twenty-second district court and they can't afford to have their own attorney. As you know, the court will appoint them an attorney. So ninety percent of the money is spent on paying the lawyers who represent the indigent uh, defendants in this matter. And additionally, thi- this is a grant that it doesn't have to be matched, you know, the, the city is um, essentially getting this money from the state by agreeing to make sure that the city and the district court employ defense counsel at all stages of the arraignment. And it's standardized all across, uh, the state of Michigan. And the, the, that's the purpose of the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission. And so it's money that was established pursuant to statute to make sure people are represented if they can't afford their own attorney.
Okay, thank you, David. Um, Councilman Washington?
So I was gonna ask, um, and it's probably a question to Vijay, you say how much? Because I see where it's a state grant contribution and then a local share contribution. Is that the amount that we have to, um, put in?
Yeah, so we, uh, we're responsible for the forty-five thousand nine forty-five.
So if we don't, if we don't get this grant, Vijay, what will we be responsible?
Reimbursed.
Twice that amount there. You have to pay it all, cause we're required to provide counsel for defendants.
So you have to do it regardless?
Correct.
This is money that we're getting to try to offset that cost. I just wanted to make that clear. With the general public and the council. But, uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Washington, continue on.
So yeah, I mean, that's what I wanted to know, if it was something that we had to do? Because when I thought about it, you know, like legal aid, defense law firms that do provide free services those type of, um, income, um, services to Wayne County residents. But, um, I guess you guys are saying that this is something that we have to do, even if we do. So if we do put in the forty-five thousand, what did you say, uh, Vijay, that we, we will be reimbursed?
Fifty-three thousand five eleven and eight cents.
Okay.
Okay.
So Mr. Chair, to the treasurer, what, what line item would that be under?
Uh, the M I D C is its own fund. So it is fund two sixty.
Was that all? Did you have, did you have another question, Councilman Shaw?
No.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none roll call, please, City Clerk.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
And motion carries, next item, please.
Item number B is consideration and approval of one offer to purchas- purchase vacant parcel located on the south side of Trow Bridge between John Daly Street and Bayhand Street, which is duly noted in the amount of five hundred dollars to my big walk-in closet for additional land for development.
Wish pleasure.
To move.
There's support?
For.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair, uh, did this, did this, uh, organization come before us before to buy land? To make, uh, is this the one that to build apartment buildings?
Yes.
Okay. So because it doesn't say in it what they want to use it for, so.
Add on to that, that, that development, additional land for development. It was just to add on to the previous development. Um, that was the, that was, that they were proposing for the, uh, building right at John Daly and Trow Bridge.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries, next item, please.
Item number C is consideration and approval of three offers to purchase, uh, vacant parcels on the west side of Henry Street between Avenue and Carlisle, I'm sorry, between Carlisle Street and Andover Street as duly noted. And, and the purpose, I'm sorry, this is just so weird how it's written. And the purpose, um, of land behind the building that Christ Temple currently owns.
And that's what I was saying too, as it relates to the three offers to purchase. Tracy Ann, can you speak to that, please? I saw her. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is not three offers. This is one offer to purchase.
Okay. It must have been a typo in there.
Yes, yes, it was.
And what is the dollar amount, please? Because.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
It's in the resolution for the cost amount for the application, eight, six, I mean, uh, sixty-four.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none roll call, please.
Sorry, Mayor, was the motion bated? I don't think anybody made the, I don't think it was moved just yet.
I apologize. Thank you, City Clerk.
No problem.
There are motion on this item.
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported. Any discussion? Hearing none roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember, um, Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
Motion carries.
And item number D is going to be consideration and approval of a special event for Harrison Liquor Store on June nineteenth.
Wish pleasure. There's support?
For?
It's been moved and properly supported. Any discussion? I know the applicant is on the line. Ms. Williams is on the line, if you wanted to tell us what's going to be going on at the event for that day for the, for the general public. Saw her on here. Maybe she's gone from there. Okay, so I know that that's, uh, basically from my understanding that it's going to be, um, like a opening, uh, like a grand reopening of the store is there. We know that, uh, several people from the community bought the actual old Harrison Liquor Store and they remodeled it and went through all the appropriate steps within the city to get it back open. So they wanted to invite the community out and they're looking to have a street closure on the one side of Harrison to be able to do a picnic-style festival, mini-small little festival for the local community there, so. Just wanted to put that out there for anyone that's in the general public of this body so past the special event.
What's the date and time?
It's, uh, June the nineteenth, I believe it starts at twelve noon. All right, any other discussion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
Right, motion carries. Thank you, City Clerk. This brings us to the next item of our agenda for public participation. Councilman Chisholm, you can give us all the rundown and go from there.
Public participation, for those who have joined us by video or the Zoom application, please press the raise hand feature to be recognized. For those who have joined us via telephone, please press star nine to be recognized and that will raise your hand. At the time that your name or the last four digits of your phone number is called and you are unmuted, please state your name for the record. You have one minute to address this body.
All right, let's go with Monica Miller.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
And meeting council participants, my name is Monica Miller. Uh, my question was for William T. Riley, Chief of Police. I don't think he's participating tonight, tonight, but I do see William Ratliff, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, what is your, your question?
Okay, my question is about in light of these recent homicides in Inkster. Okay, uh, last week, I believe it was three homicides. Uh, it's been going on, it's getting worse. What plan of action do you have in order? Um, for this, for these tragedies, these murders? Okay, I believe it was what, three within a few days of each other? What are you doing? What is your plan? And if you don't have one, why not? William Riley and William Ratliff. And this is also to you, the mayor and council as well. What's going on? What, what is the plan here? What are we doing? People getting killed? This is, um, just horrible, as small as Inkster is. Speak, real talk, somebody talk, tell me something. I've been here fifty-three years. Okay, it's getting worse, it's getting worse, but it's getting worse, not getting better. Uh, William Riley, he never speaks at these meetings, neither does William Ratliff. Why are you at these meetings? What, what are you doing? Tell us something.
Yeah, we are, and let me say this, as a mayor of this community, we are formulating right now, um, a community action committee to come together and start to formulate, um, different ideas to get off into the community because, you know, you said you lived here for fifty-three years, so you know the woes of Inkster. Um, and this is not just beginning today and it's not just beginning, you know, within the last few years since the chief has been in control. This is something that our community has to stand together and we have to be accountable to one another. We have twenty-five thousand citizens in the city of Inkster. You know, seven members of council and, you know, twenty-eight sworn police officers. So we all have a part to play in this. So Ms. Miller, as, as, as you know, you, you stated for, you know, William Riley, our Chief of Police and, and our A.C., not speaking at these meetings, um, unfortunately, unless they have something on the agenda or they need to bring something up, you know, for us, and this is an important matter, um, we will speak on it during that time. So, um, after we form our community actions committee, uh, which I'm going to be spearheading, we will be having, uh, community, um, engagements with COVID being lifted. We will be getting out within the community and formulating, uh, block clubs, strengthening those block clubs that already exist, working with our council members within their district to, uh, enhance them and to give them whatever they need and the tools that they need. But it's all, it's up to all of us. It's not just on this body. We know that as the leaders for this community, we are responsible for formulating a plan of action and to be able to gather our people together to come to arms, but we are at war. And I believe that, um, if we come together the right way, that we can start to curve and diminish, uh, those things that are happening within our community and that have been happening in our community. So I totally, I hear you one hundred percent. I believe that, you know, as council speaks tonight, they'll echo the same sentiments. We, we're with you. We're, we're outraged and we know that, you know, i- it's all of our responsibilities. It's our family members, our cousins, our friends, families, people that we possibly even made note on that, you know, we have to help the police and we can't just say that it's the police. You know, especially being understaffed. We went from sixty-five police officers in two thousand and twelve because of the consent agreement to twenty-eight sworn officers, including our Chief of Police and our Assistant Chief of Police. Uh, believe me, they're running, they're not doing any preventative maintenance. We've called out to the, um, we've called out to the, we've called out to the, um, the state, uh, as well for support, to the federal government as well and the county as well for support. So, uh, task force is being formed, um, some things are happening behind the scenes already within our community. So just know that we are not sitting on our hands with this. This is something that we, we take seriously um, because this affects our livelihoods within this community. You know, Inkster, in order for us to thrive, has to be safe, clean and accessible. And safety is number one, so. Um, I know that I didn't necessarily answer all of your questions and concerns tonight, but believe me, we are forthcoming and we are working to organ, to get organized and I hope that you will be part of that as well.
I am a part of it. I am a part of it.
That's good to know. All right, thank you very much, ma'am, for your comments and, and we will, let me see, Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Can I have your phone number?
Sure.
Am I sharing it with me, sharing it with the group right now with us?
I'll email it to you.
Okay, thank you. Do that for me, please, ma'am, okay?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's recognize phone number two-five-seven-one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council in residence. This is Tony Bailey, Inkster Beautification. How was everyone this evening?
Good, Tony.
Good.
Yes. For the month of June, I'd like to say our cleanup, community cleanup will be June twenty-sixth. We want everyone to come on out and help. We want to keep Inkster beautiful. Nine AM at the rec center, rain or shine. Also remind, we give our community service certificate.
Awesome, and keep up the good work, Tony. I see you guys are out planting flowers all over the place. Um, you know, you don't have to be a part of the beautification community, uh, a committee to keep Inkster clean. You can do your part. Uh, Tony is definitely, uh, along with, uh, Gabe and um, the whole body over there, you guys are definitely moving and shaking and then setting the example for us, so we want to make sure that we, that we help you. So we definitely will be out there with you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Belinda?
Hi, my name's Belinda. I'm a resident, resident of Inkster. I just had a question. Did the city of Inkster receive the American Rescue Plan Act?
Are you, you're speaking on the dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, Vijay, can you speak to that, please?
That's the amount that, um, is coming from the federal government for two-point-three-nine-seven million that we have in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget.
Okay, that's great. So what do you plan to do with the funds?
That is what we still have to figure out. There's a number of regulations surrounding them and we need to determine as a group how we can use them. So we don't have that answer specifically yet.
So should you do a special meeting for the public to be able to add to it and, and, and make recommendations on where the funds should be used? Such as park, the parks, recreation, maybe the neighborhood, maybe small businesses?
I would have to deter, uh, deter to the mayor on that, but wha- what I think is important for us to consider is we want to utilize the funds as much as possible for any sort of necessary expenses we have so that we can help offset, um, expenses that we would have incurred anyhow, which would negatively impact our general fund balance. So we want to use this as much as possible to help grow and, um, maintain within our general fund balance.
I would just add to that, I would just add to that, uh, Ms. Belinda, that, um, you know, given these funds, the, the, the actual federal government is formulating exactly what we can use those funds for. Um, because this is a couple of monies that's supposed to be kind of, you know, helping, um, communities such as ours offset costs that we've incurred during, um, COVID. Um, at the same time, um, we know that we are in a budget constraint. So as to the treasurer's point, um, you know, those monies that are coming into us when we receive them, we will look at, you know, what, you know, we can do to make sure that we keep um, the city in a fi- a place physically to be able to continue to provide the services that we provide. But also too, if the, if that calls for, you know, monies going into the community to use for small businesses, use for our parks and, and development within the community, we will have a community conversation leading on to that, so we will keep you informed.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Recognizing Locane.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and Inkster residents. My name is Lynette Kane, middle initial O. I am a resident of Inkster and a member of the Planning Commission. But tonight I am speaking to you as the Executive Director of Opportunity Tennis Academy. I hand-delivered a letter to City Hall to be placed in each of your mailboxes a few weeks ago, which detailed our program and the opportunities that we offer for the youth, and I hope that you all have received it by now. Tonight, I am simply asking for your support and a commitment to have space for our tennis academy at the Inkster Rec Center for the fall and winter seasons at a minimal cost, as we are a nonprofit organization trying to bring our program at minimal cost to the youth in the area.
Yep, and, and Ms. Kane, thank you so much for your service on both sides of that. And we do have, um, in, in our policy for the cost of the complex for local, uh, nonprofits to be able to use the, the rec complex at, uh, a discounted rate. So what we will do is Gina Triplett has been the person that's been in charge of that and you know, we, we'll get you in contact with her so we can talk about that rate and then if there's something else that we need to do beyond that, then we'll, we'll, we'll talk from there. But we definitely, uh, thank you for everything that you're doing with, with the kids and, and the, the tennis program, believe me, we all support that one hundred percent.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Wimberly?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Yes, to Ms. Kane, um, I did try calling her ro- once I got the letter, but, um, I played tennis at the rec center for years. I have the trophies to prove it. So there's, um, there's, it's an excellent idea and if any cost can be deleted from it, that would be great. I also plan to donate to her personally, as well as I can plans to dis- um, to, uh, contribute to her program financially also. That's all I want to say.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Watley, and I will give you a call myself next week.
Okay, thank you.
That is awesome. I'm looking forward to seeing that. That's great. Okay, so any other help you need, please, uh, Ms. Kane, do not hesitate to, to, to ask and, you know, make sure, you know, we're, we're on the commission together. So if you need anything from me, call me direct.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Eight-five-two-six, Councilman Chisholm, if you recognize.
You are unmuted.
Yep, I saw him. Eight-five-two-six, you're unmuted. We can't hear you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good, good evening, Mayor and Council and the city residents. This is Stephanie Taylor from Murray's Real Estate Services. I was driving, so I couldn't try to, um, click in to make a correction. Yes, Christ Temple is purchasing three small lots behind a building that they own. It's just, they just issued one check, so that's how it could be kind of confusing, looking at like it's one offer, but it's three small parcels at two-fifty a piece that equals to seven hundred and fifty dollars behind their building on Carlisle. Um, so I just wanted to make that correction because, um, I know you guys passed it, but I don't want you to think you was passing it for one big lot. It was three small lots that looked like one big lot, but they just put one money order.
Okay, thank you for that correction and clarification. At the same time, I know that you're working, um, with Tracy to make sure that she has all the information that she needs. Um, you know, just, you know, it's important for me that as we're, you know, of course, in, in the public and speaking in the public that, you know, she has all that information as well.
Yes, she does.
Yeah. You know, she had one person, so I appreciate the communication, but I'm going to, um, you know, you know, I know you're working directly with her, that you make sure that she has everything that she needs as she's presenting to this body.
Now, I'm sorry, I had to mute her because there's a lot of background noise and it was blocking you out from talking.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. I was just saying that, um, again, you know, just for a clarification, um, that, uh, Ms. Taylor, um, from Murray Real Estate has been working with, um, with Tracy and making sure that we got all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, so, um, you know, Tracy said one parcel and then, of course, you have a realtor come on and say three, and that is our city realtor. However, I just want to make sure that, you know, that Tracy has the same information and we don't have any confusion as we're, as we're voting, even though those lots are small and it could be assumed, you know, we did something. We want to make sure we're all on the same page. Now, saying that, as a body, you know, I can go ahead and move forward with this, but I just need to make sure that we're all on the same page because past practice has been for non-buildable lots, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. For buildable lots, five hundred dollars. That's been going on for, you know, that was, you know, cost of living goes up. So, you know, I'm, I, I want to propose to this body and I don't know if this is part of, um, our costs, of, you know, analysis. We talk about, you know, um, different fees in our fee schedule. We need to include that into that, but I would say for vacant lots, we need to be at least five hundred dollars and a thousand dollars for buildable lots. And, um, based off of talking to the assessor and looking at what we can do constitutionally, I think that that makes sense, but, you know, it's up to this body. But, you know, I'm like, two, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a vacant lot, five hundred for a buildable lot. You know, we want to get these back on the tax road because they are city-owned property right now. We're liable for them, but at the same time, I wanted to put that out to you guys and to see what your thoughts were. And go from there. But we don't have to talk about it tonight. I just want to put it out there for you and then I'll put it into, put it in writing. That way we can go from there.
So, Mr. Chair, do we need to go back over that?
So, Mr. Chair, do we need to go back over that, you know, that motion? I mean, Felicia, do we?
No, I'm not making, I'm not making, oh, you're talking about the motion. Yes, of course. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, for sure. You have to. Yeah.
Yes, you have.
Yeah, you have. We have to because it's three lots. Yeah, it's three lots. I mean, you really, we voted on something that, you know, don't exist. That's the case. Because it's three separate lots. So how we do that? How we do that, City Clerk?
Make a motion for amendment. Under council's concerns, can someone make the motion?
Yep. That can be done right there.
All right, cool. Let's let's make that happen on that. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Murray, for jumping in there.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I will make sure that we look over everything and make sure everything is clear for everyone to understand the next time. And thank you for going back. I was driving. That's why I couldn't hurry up and click in. So I apologize deeply. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for taking the time to go over it.
No worries. Thank you. Leonette's phone? Can recognize that?
Hello, Mayor, City Council, and residents of the city of Inkster. My name is Lynette Kane, without the O. And I just want to piggyback on the OTA, Opportunity Tennis Academy conversation that went on just a little while ago. There is a component of OTA that hasn't been spoken on that I do want to address. There is an educational component of OTA that I believe is very beneficial to the kids that attend the program and could be very beneficial to a greater part of the Inkster community. I recently retired from the Wayne Westland School District. I am a highly qualified teacher and I am one of the co-directors of the educational program. That is something that I think will really benefit our kids. And I just want to add that to this discussion and really want everyone to support that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for adding that. We're definitely supporting anything education in the city of Inkster. So I'm looking forward to working with you. All right, let's recognize 7441.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, hi. This is Michelle Motley, Southwest Block Club. And I have a question. Hi, everybody. Mr. Mayor, Councilmen and women, how are you guys and everybody else? I have a question about land purchase and home ownership, buying a house in Inkster. What is the criteria for for say like buying land in Inkster? And say if I'm staying with someone and perhaps they may have colds or something like that, or say if they owe anything, am I able to and say I'm living there, am I able, am I able to purchase land or property or house or building?
And just for clarification, are you, are you asking if you owe any money to the city of Inkster or any violations if you can buy any property?
Yes. Well, if I'm living with somebody and I'm using their address.
Oh, gotcha. This is for, so let me, let me say this, and please, the city attorney can jump in or council, you can help me, help me out, that if you're an individual or a company that owes the city money or have any outstanding violations, then you can't buy any property till you have those things cleared up. It's not the address, it's an individual or an actual company.
Okay, what if I'm living with someone and using their address at the time?
I don't think that that would be a factor into that, you know, you as an individual, if you don't owe the city any monies or, you know, you don't have any violations with the city for, you know, any code violations for any buildings or property that you own, then you're able to purchase.
Okay, okay. So if I'm living with somebody and they perhaps have a problem, that wouldn't affect me at all?
No, ma'am.
If I'm sharing the same address, okay. And I also have one more question, if you guys don't mind. What is the plan that you guys have going on, say like the next two, three years, moving forward in the city of Inkster, things, big things that you guys may have going on or are planning to do?
So, so we do, and let me say this, we do have a master plan that the city, you know, each five years that we update. The last one was updated, I believe, in 2017, which is listed on the city's website. At the same time, we know you live in Inkster and have been here. We're looking to, you know, bring any opportunity for development here in the city of Inkster. We're concentrating right now on our downtown thoroughfare at Inkster Road and Michigan Avenue and our town center and doing some things there. The previous administration did put for an actual downtown development plan. The feasibility study was connected to that. So we've shopped that out. We're actually putting it back out for an RFP form right now with our city planner to develop our downtown area. And of course, we're looking to enhance Michigan Avenue, working with MEDC. We've done, we've done several market analysis study that the state of Michigan has paid for as relates to residential property in the city of Inkster and working on different clusters within the city. Also too, with our commercial properties, as you see, if you've been riding, the city of Inkster have been out, you've seen orange stickers on buildings that are either vacated or dilapidated. So we're looking to, you know, get with those owners, if it's city-owned property, get it sold because the city's not in the business of real estate. At the same time, to be able to develop those properties and get people into those particular properties doing business. So at a high level, of course, you know, getting in the city of Inkster, those things that we're missing within the city. Unfortunately, Inkster's a food desert. You know, I love Food Max. We have Food Max. But Food Max is always all the way on the other side of town. It's not on the south side or it's not in the center of the city as it relates to bringing in a grocery store here to the city of Inkster that'll be accessible to the south side and the north side. So those are things that, you know, as, you know, individually, as the mayor of the city of Inkster, I'm focused in on. At the same time, I know that I do have council support overall, and the council themselves are working in their perspective areas to bring and to bring revitalization, revitalization into those areas. But it's all dictated on the master plan. And we will be revisiting that within the next year because it's that time to get community input as it relates to what you would like to see as a whole within the community. So we can concentrate on that.
Oh, that sounds great. Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And thank you so much. All right, Timothy Williams.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. How are you doing this evening?
Good evening.
I'm here. First, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Leanna Hicks Public Library. I'm one of the board members and just calling this, letting everyone know that we have a 2021 summer reading program. It's called Tales to Tales. It starts January 20, I'm sorry, starts June 28th to August the 14th. It's not just a reading program. There's other things we're going to be doing there. We got a lot of games. We have a lot of sports events that's going to be taking place as well. And just want to let the neighbors know and the youth know that we do have a summer program that's available at the Leanna Hicks Public Library. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask him a question?
Please.
How long is it going to last? It starts, can you repeat, when is the day it starts?
It's going to start June 28th and it's going to go to August the 14th.
Okay. And then if someone who wants to participate in that, they need to come and fill out an application there?
They can do that. They can do it online or they can go to our website or I can bring a couple of the copies up to City Hall if needed.
Okay. And one more thing, I'm sorry. What's the time?
The library opens from 10 o'clock AM to 7 PM. And that's Monday through, we close on Friday, open on Saturday, close on Sunday.
Okay. And the summer program hours?
From, from 10 AM to 7 PM.
Oh, okay. It's gonna be, okay, okay.
All day, every day.
Oh, wow. That's beautiful. That's beautiful. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, moving right along. Carlton Schwabshire?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. How's everyone doing today?
Good evening. How are you?
I'm doing great. The reason for my call is that a lot that I own on Hyde Park, I need to see if I can get some help with what it really is mine and what isn't mine. Because the county explained to me that the entire lot was mine. Mario was charging me commercial off of Middle Belt. Then Mario started turning to residents. He sent me a check, but no one still said which part is mine, which part isn't. I've mowed the entire lot. I removed the foundation from the lot, which was a previous home. So at this point in time, I don't even know if I received the right amount of money back that Mario sent me a check for. So all I'm asking is if I can get someone, City Council, to do a survey so we know who owns what there.
You know, I'm going to have to defer to the city attorney because I believe that if, is it, are you saying that it's the city's property or are you saying that it's the county's property?
I believe it's the city's property because it's actually the back part of the golf court where the gate is up of Hyde Park. Last street before you get to Middle Belt going west.
Okay. So, Mr. Schwabshire, what I will do is, can you just shoot me, shoot me an email? I don't know if you have my email address. If you don't, I can send it to you.
Sure.
And, you know, CC Mario on that as well. And then what we'll do is we'll do a follow-up and see what we can do to help. Because I know that the city doesn't necessarily do surveys. At the same time, you know, we do some, they'll do a little bit of more digging and due diligence and work with the county, being that it is abutted to the county park, we can find out what's going on with it. Is that something that you want? Is that, is that something that you want to have under your control or what are you?
I love that my control. Like I said, I've been spending money cutting the grass for how long? Because I don't know what section of this mine. As I said before, Mario had listed me as Middle Belt and as Hyde Park. And he changed from commercial to residential. So it left me in a, an answer that I can't figure out nor can anyone else seem to help me with.
Okay, I understand. I understand. Okay, then, we'll definitely follow up with that. So again, if you could, just send me an email as relates to that and CC Mario, and then we'll go from there.
I'll be sure to get it to you before the end of the week.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Betty Adams?
Hi. My apologies. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Just a slight correction for the summer reading program at the Leanna Hicks Public Library. Come to the library to sign up and you get all the details on when programs are happening. They are ongoing throughout the time from June 28th through August 14th. It's a varying schedule of events. So you have to come to the library and get the calendar from us. And the calendar on the website is updating by the end of this week to reflect exactly what the programs are going to be on a weekly basis. It's going to be updated. And the hours are 11 AM to 7 PM, Monday through Thursday, and then Saturday, 11 AM to 5 PM. And she's, she's, just a note to the fire station, my daughter really appreciates the fire hat.
All right. And thank you so much. That's our librarian. No, I'm sorry, librarian. It's library, not library. I got it. Thank you, Betty, for that. So just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. If you could, please send us a flyer so we can have Troy put it on all of our social media outlets as well as the community access channel. Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Let's see here. All right, City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And just for the general public, City Clerk Rutledge has agreed to stay on with us and help us with our minutes, our meetings until we find a replacement. And hopefully it'll be, you know, quickly, City Clerk, because we know that you're on to other opportunities, but we really appreciate your time. We're looking to conduct possible interviews for the City Clerk on June the 10th. We do have a couple of candidates that have been put, have been put before this body. And we're looking to do that along with the water rates. At that time, we'll be talking about the City Clerk and meeting with possible new candidates for the City Clerk's position and also too with our water rates at June the 10th at 5 PM. All right, City Clerk? I'm sorry, City Treasurer?
I just want to say thanks to everyone. This is my last week with Inkster. And I am working with Daryl Green, who is our incoming treasurer, to work on transitioning items. I appreciate working with everybody, the mayor, City Council, everyone at the City Hall and different departments, fire and police. And Mayor, not to steal your thunder, but if you'd like to introduce Daryl.
No, you go, you go ahead. You go ahead. I just wanted to say in between, though, man, thank you so much for all the work that you, that you've done. You know, of course, you know, working through this, you know, the entire transition from Mr. Carrington to yourself and, you know, bringing us to the point now to, to having a budget approval so we can move forward. I really appreciate all the time, the sacrifice and everything that I know that I put you through. So I just want to tell you, thank you publicly. I really appreciate you and, you know, I wish you well in anything that you're doing and anything that I can do for you to enhance that. Please do not hesitate to reach out. So go ahead. You can steal my thunder.
I appreciate that, ma'am. So, Mr. Daryl Green, if you are on here, if you'd be able to, oh, there you are, just, I guess, if you could give a quick background and introduce yourself.
Hey, I'm Daryl Green, originally from Inkster. Familiar with a lot of the Inkster residents and born and raised there and went off to college and became an educated individual and looking forward to bringing my knowledge and expertise back to the city of Inkster and helping move forward with the plan that the mayor has in place.
Yeah, and you're so nice. And you've always been that way, and we appreciate that. But just give us a little bit about your background so people know that we do have tremendous talent here in the city of Inkster. And, you know, definitely looking to cultivate that. But tell us a little bit about your professional background.
Well, I have four college degrees. I have a degree in marketing, a bachelor's degree in accounting, an associate's degree. I have an MBA in management. I'm a CPA certified public accountant. I've worked in accounting, a sports agent, managed professional basketball organizations, insurance agent. So I have a wealth of knowledge, always had, you know, opportunities that I've brought to the city of Inkster. So wherever I can fit in, I'm, you know, I'm glad to help. So that's pretty much why I'm here.
Daryl, I mean, the one that's, I mean, more impressive to me is that you're a professor. I mean, because you know, so I mean, touch on that just a little bit because you did me.
I've been a professor for 10 years. I'm a professor of accounting. So I've been sports management professor, also a professor of business. So that's a passion of mine. Education is a passion of mine. So anyone that's interested in teaming up with me and bringing forth education, I'd be glad to hear from you guys and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much, Daryl. Any questions from the council or any comments from the council at this time for Mr. Green?
To that?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to welcome Mr. Green. And I think he's going to be a very inspirational individual for the city of Inkster. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
All right. All right, moving right along. Mayor and Council. Councilman Shaw, you look like you're ready to start. Got anything for us?
A few things. We definitely want to do a little housekeeping with the motion. I want to, would like to make the motion to consider approval concerning, consider approval of three offers to purchase vacant property, parcels located on the, hello?
Yeah, I'm listening to Councilman Shaw.
Okay. I just want to change that to three parcels instead of one parcel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that for that item, Councilman Howard was the mayor. Um, I believe that for that item, um, Councilwoman Howard was the maker of the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mayor Proton, would you be willing to adjust your, your motion?
Okay, I make a motion that the offer to purchase three properties instead of one. On, which one was that, that was on the item, was that on item C?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Item C.
Mm-hmm.
Purchase three, uh, three properties located on the south side of Trow Bridge, no, that's.
No, the west side, I'll read it for you, the west side of Henry Street between Carlos Street and Andover Street.
That's what noted. Okay, and that was for Christ Temple, right?
Yes, for Christ.
Okay, I was reading the, the item before that, I apologize, okay, yes, I make a consideration to, uh, well, my motion is to, uh, approval of three vacant lots instead of one. For Christ Temple, for Christ Temple, is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And I support that.
Any discussion? Hearing the roll call, please?
Councilmember Watley? Council, uh, Member Watley?
Yes.
Okay, no problem, Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Mayor, we have six yay.
All right, thank you so very much, most impassioned, thank you, Councilman Shaw, thank you, Mayor Proton Howard. Uh, Councilman Shaw, continue?
Yes, uh, I, you, you may mention about the, uh, downtown development, uh, uh, you know, project and what have you. We do have some property there on Michigan Avenue on the north side, um, the, the old pharmacy and what have you. If we can have some, some folks, uh, you know, cut the grass, because I've seen some, some stickers and what have you that, that was there, but the grass definitely needs to be cut and spruced up in that area because there's trash back in that, uh, ph- pharmacy park right there. So, it needs to be spruced up, because I noticed that they're planting flowers and what have you on our, our corridor there.
Yes, sir, we're definitely on top of it, um, I have been in contact with the owners of that particular, uh, building, it's four owners of that parcel, and we're looking to uh, possibly do a development together in that area where we would tear it down and build something new or either spruce, you know, not necessarily spruce it up, but uh, redevelop it as it relates to the facade and, um, because the city owns the back parking lot right behind it, so we have to do our part too. And, uh, keeping it clean and keeping it up, so I'm working with them, believe me, by the end of this week, it'll be done and it'll look totally different in that area. I gotta get out there and do it myself and they don't want me doing that, so. They, they, they're, they're, they're working with me.
All right, I appreciate that, and also if you can look at your calendar, um, uh, what we can meet with the, with yourself and the Chief of Police, uh, maybe sometime, uh, next week. Maybe on that Wednesday or Thursday, the sixteenth or seventeenth. Um, I know we usually meet up on that Wednesday. Um, possibly we can do, you know, do something like that, uh, the sixteenth. Uh, but also have the Chief of Police there as well, so we can discuss some matters. Um, I think the caller may mention about, you know, there's some heavy things that are going on and my heart is heavy for it because, uh, some of those loss of life were in my district. So I definitely want to meet, uh, with you and the chief, I'm not gonna say too much right now, but, uh, if we can, if we can schedule something.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and just, you know, have some conversation, uh, because, you know, it is a problem, you know? Uh, we talked about numbers and what have you some years ago, um, about, you know, arrest records and what have you. Uh, but i- i- it is heavy for, for the summer. And on that note, I do want to, um, encourage my members to stay vigilant. If you see something, we definitely want you to say something. And to stay mindful of what you're doing throughout the community. Uh, and, um, you know, keep, keep, keep your eyes open. And if you need to report anything, call nine one one and remain anonymous on your reporting. Uh, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilman Shaw. Councilman Chisholm?
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Chisholm. Councilwoman Washington?
I don't have anything yet, uh, for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things, Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I would, uh, I make a pinpoint that you sending the, the twenty-nine people that are applying for the Clutch job, I would appreciate it before. I mean, I understand that you indicated tonight that you forwarded two or three names, okay?
No, 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 what we're saying, Councilman, is that you and I, we both went through the emails and saw your name on the email chain of the twenty-nine applicants that we did send out. So I wanna make sure that you get that information.
Right, it did not, it did not get to me and, and then on our hand, people saying they're making recommendations, I, you know, I would like to also make.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna send that to you as soon as we're off this meeting, sir.
Okay, I would, I would appreciate that very much. Another thing, can, can, um, um, and, and, and when you, uh, got someone in my, my district that, that approaches you with problems, can you just CC me?
Of course, yes, sir, definitely will.
Okay, well, I would know that it's a problem in my area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I appreciate it very much.
No problem.
Okay, after that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, sir, thank you very much, Councilwoman Wiley?
The, uh, basketball court that's on Easter Road, north of Michigan, by the, um, uh, by the, uh, water situation, is that the, um, DPW or is that Parks and Rec?
Yeah, I'm, and, and, and Councilwoman Wiley, I, I'm, I'm trying, I, you, you're, I don't know if it's your audio or what, it's like you keep going in and out, like you come up, your voice is, you know, and we can hear you. But I did think that you said about, you're talking about the water basin, the CSO basin where the basketball rims are at, on Easter Road, across the street from.
Right.
Okay.
Right, is that?
Is that Parks and Rec or is that DPW, who maintains that?
Yeah, let, let me have, uh, Mr. Bivens speak to that, because, believe me, I'm on it all the time about that particular um, placement, but, uh, Mr. Bivens, can you speak to that, please? And what's going on with that?
I thought it was the county, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, I, I'm gonna have, uh, Mr. Bivens.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, to the public. Uh, the building belongs to us, basketball court belongs to us. The county operates that building. Um, until we pursue them to ask them to leave. Once we have, um, solidified our debt to them, we can't have any debt, outstanding debt to the county. Once we paid off any delinquencies we owe to the county, then I can request possession of that building, but, yes, that building and the basketball court does belong to us. And it is closed down for safety and healthy reasons. Um, that basketball court is in bad shape, that building's in bad shape. I've shared this information with the mayor. Uh, I did a walkthrough on that building a few years ago. And we had a, um, engineering firm, the County High, the Engineering Firm, to come out and take a look at it and they gave us assessment, uh, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, but I think it was, it was over a hundred thousand, right, Mr. Mayor?
Well, Mr. Bivens, you told me you did the assessment over three years ago, so, I, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't here.
No, I'm saying, when I shared the email with you, I, I sent you the actual study.
I think it was a little bit more than, I think it was about two, two hundred thousand or something like that to read.
Yeah, I know it was a spess, or it might have been in the millions, but it needs some work up there, that's why it's not open. Uh, every now and then, we get up there to clean it and try to keep people off of it. So to answer your question, uh, Councilwoman Wiley, yeah, that basketball court belongs to us. And so does the building, but like I say, the county operates the building because we have some delay for debt to them.
Yeah, I appreciate your, your.
What she said?
Yeah.
Did she say she?
Some with her audio.
Okay, can you hear me there?
Yeah, we can hear you a little bit better.
You faded and out.
I said, I appreciate your comprehensive answer, however, I have an email from one of our constituents about putting the rims and stuff back up, but if that place is not being utilized again, can we?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't let you go on, I, you, you, I can't hear, I can't hear you and I don't think the general public can hear you either.
She says she got an email from one of her constituents or concern about us putting the basketball rims up.
And, and, if anyone can hear me, yeah, put them back up or at least put some signage up there, letting them know it's closed.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, and, um, one other thing. Did we lose the amphitheater money?
No, so, um, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, um, that, um, it's actually Jewel Jones, uh, had appropriated for us. Uh, at this time, we asked for an extension, we talked to the state and they said, of course, you had to talk to, to Jewel Jones in his office. Uh, I think Councilman Chisholm is actually on here, can, can kind of maybe speak to that a little bit. But, um, at the same time, um, we haven't lost the money, but I know that we have to spend it this year, so we're just trying to get to the point where we know exactly like, um, you know, who we go back after to actually get the money from. So that's what we're in right now, but go ahead, Councilman Chisholm.
Yeah, I, in the past, I had inquired, I sent those emails, um, I was told that it was on pause for a second and I sent some more emails just kind of following up. Never got really any feedback because, uh, Preston Peterson, the Chief of Staff in our office, had inquired about different grants that were utilized by the city of Inkster through the state or not utilized. Um, that was just some information he was requesting, not, you know, not all of them dating back to, you know, the beginning of time. But he needed that reference, because he was gonna reach out, I'm assuming, to the Department of Treasury or Home. But, and from this particular point, per that last email that I sent out inquiring on it, I don't have anything.
Oh, let me back up then, okay, so let me toss it over to Vijay, Vijay, can you help me out with this, because I thought that we were in correspondence about this one fifty, and we've been going back and forth, trying to figure out exactly, you know, with the extension and all of that stuff, just because of COVID. And I think a lot of people don't realize, we've been in COVID for over a year and a half, and oh boy, but go ahead, Vijay.
On this one, I don't have anything, I know that there was the correspondence with, uh, uh, with, uh, Jewel, but I don't know what, uh, came after that, so. Uh, I mean, that's something that we can, uh, we, we can look back and see with the state.
Yeah, I know that, uh, the state, it, you know, from the email correspondence that we received from the state, from Eric Klein and from, uh, Larry, from the Deputy Clerk, I mean, from the Deputy Treasurer's office, you know, identified the money, that the money was actually there and it was Jewel Jones was the person, because we were trying to find out where the money actually came from and what grant it was it came from, and then that's when Councilman Chisholm had asked about the grants and where we were with different grants and things of that nature, and you were supposed to be getting some type of Excel spreadsheet basically saying what the money was used, if it was used, or the timelines and all that stuff. So, let, let, let me say this, uh, Councilman Chisholm, and for this body, um, and Councilwoman Wiley, you asked a question. I'll find out by the end of the week exactly where we're at with that, because we do have plans to present to the council as it relates to, um, getting started with some idea of an amphitheater. We know that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars won't build us out an amphitheater, I've talked to the folks over in Wayne with their amphitheater at Gotti Park, it cost them over eight hundred and fifty thousand to build out. So, um, for us, a hundred and fifty thousand, you know, twenty thousand maybe in feasibility studies and engineering, just with that, and then looking at how we're gonna actually lay it out, so. Um, you know, we're doing our best to make sure that we utilize that money. At the same time, we know that, um, that's money that's gonna have to come out of the budget. Um, and then, you know, we, we get reimbursed for it, so we wanna just make sure, you know, where it is and who's the actual agency that's giving us the money, and I believe it was DNR, am I mistaken? Steve, do you know?
Either DNR or it was a supplemental from the end of the year, uh, with the state's budgets, when they dispersed all the supplementals for the different communities, that was something they did this year, but, or, I'm sorry, not this year, at the end of, uh, February twenty, I'm sorry, in twenty nineteen, but when COVID hit or was announced in March twenty twenty, all of those funds got reverted back to begin going out for, uh, you know, like unemployment and things of that nature with the state. I also wanted to, uh, piggybacking Mr. Mayor, just say too, one of the things we could do, even if out of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if twenty thousand dollars of it did go to a feasibility study, as long as we started the groundwork, um, as, as multiple entities do, and say you just, you started pouring the concrete or the foundation or something, you know, you, you started. And, of course, it might not be an overnight project, the airport, the new terminal out there, the McNamara Terminal, was not an overnight project. It took years for that to be constructed and other projects as well. But I believe that's a safeguard when you accept these monies, you start the project, and of course, it's gonna be in phases.
Yeah, I agree, I just wanna make sure we can get the money from somewhere and, and what I'll be proposing is, um, doing something similar to what has been done down at Campus Marshes with a open-air amphitheater type of deal. Um, and it'll become, for if I have, uh, one of our, um, local construction guys that's doing some three D rendering for us that we'll present to this body to see if, you know, we can start to move on that, to have something that's attainable. But also too, to something that's usable, Steve, like, you know, I, I know that, you know, we can do things in phases, however, I think we need some wins around here. And I believe the concept like they did at Campus Marshes with the open-air amphitheater, that where we can get out into that area at, at the old City Hall on the front lawn over in that area to be able to, you know, have some different, uh, concerts and events and, you know, seminars and things of that nature and outdoor Jenga and chests and, you know, uh, what, what's the one, they throw, not the horseshoes, but the other one, you know, cornhole, you know, things of that nature, you know, bringing the community together, so we're definitely trying to figure out exactly, you know, what's the best use, so we can have the best impact for us right away. Sorry, Council, Councilwoman Wiley, I went on a little bit too far, you got anything else for?
I forgot, you took so long, no, I'm just kidding. I'm through.
Tell you, oh, you just don't know, I really like you. All right, Mayor Proton Howard?
Ah, yes, hi, um, I just wanted to know the property that's next to City Hall. I just happened to come to City Hall the day to get my package and notice the grass, Scott. Uh, what are we doing, because I know someone owns their property and why can't they keep it up?
Yeah, I totally agree, I know that the property actually changed hands and believe me, I look at it right out my window, right now, I'm looking at it. And, um, they, um, they're in the process right now with planning to, uh, present to the body, because that was approved to become a cultivating center right next door here to City Hall. Um, however, uh, you know, we're gonna work with, uh, tomorrow, believe me, I'll be on top of that with the, um, code enforcement officer with Officer Law. I'm having them have some correspondence with them, and then if they don't cut it, we will be cutting it, that's, that goes for that one. And then across the street, which I know that, uh, Mr. Hatchem, Abe Hatchem actually bought from the city, uh, several years ago, uh, right across the street from us, um, and getting that cut as well, so, believe me, we wanna definitely make it look nice. And that areas, if they don't cut it, we'll cut it and then we'll put it on their taxes.
Yeah, but it shouldn't have got as far, as high as it is, that, that is ridiculous, but anyway, in, in going forward, when we sell land like that, that have grass to it, um, they seem to not cut it, and we turn around and end up using our, utilizing our guys to cut these properties, uh, and then build them, maybe a suggestion would be to put a dollar amount in these, uh, in, in, in the contract, when they do get the land, we want the money upfront, because this is crazy. And then we have to go to, you know, do all of this to even try to get our money back. But at the same time, if you wanna come and do business with us and you acting like that, then why would we want you here? Because we shouldn't have to tell you to cut the grass. We really shouldn't, we shouldn't have to tell anybody that wants property in the city of Inkster that acquires a property in the city of Inkster to cut the grass. You know, maybe it should be something inverted back, if you can't take care of the land, reverse back to us. You know, something, but, you know, they come to Inkster and they do whatever they wanna do, because they can, because we don't enforce it really hard. And, and, and like I said, that's a whole, that grass is high, it just didn't get high overnight. So I think that we need to do a better job in that, in that department. Um, and, and keeping our land up around us, because people drive down, thank God it's not on Michigan Avenue where people can actually see how bad it really is, but the resident. how bad it really is. But the residents that stay across the street and all that, it looks bad. And it's across the street from the police department and across the street from our city hall. That makes it even worse. Um, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor Proton. All right, hey, Jerome? Please, very quickly, as it relates to GFL and what's happening right now with our trash hauler, please?
Uh, good evening, Mayor Council again and the residents. Um, over the weekend, I was contacted by GFL due to some rubbish issues in our community with, uh, shortage of manpower and staffing that they have. Uh, Friday route was not complete. It was left out there. Uh, I was contacting them just before the meeting by one of the GMs that they did complete Friday's route today. And they were trying to start Monday's route. So in essence, this week, trash will be, the trash, my trash did get picked up today. I'm on Monday's route. But I've noticed they didn't pick up the compost or the bulk or, or the recycle. So I see they just running a trash truck. So if your residents are complaining to you, just forward the information to my office, because I told Repub- I mean, GFL to keep me posted. I'm keeping the mayor posted, um, with the information as I get it. But right now, they're suffering like everybody else in the country is with manpower issue. Uh, Saturday, they had three guys just walk off the job. They just brought their trucks in and left. They, they averaging about twenty drivers a day not coming in. So we're hurting, Garden City's hurting, Devil Heights is hurting. Um, Wayne is hurting and they're serviced by Republicans. So all, all companies right now are suffering basically due to the unemployment, the way people are getting paid to really stay home. They don't wanna work. So now we starting to feel the bite. So I'm asking all residents, Mayor Council to be patient, you know, it's not for lack of effort. It's just, you know, when you're on how the bodies and you work people so many hours, they get tired and they get burnt out. As you know, I go through that on a regular basis with my staff. So we just have to be patient and, um, if it push comes to shove, I've already talked to the mayor. I might have to do some other things. Not, not bringing it, but pitch in and help them out because this is our community, you know, as a last resort, but I'm giving them an opportunity to right the situation themselves. So like I said, if you got any questions or concerns or wanna talk to me offline, feel free to call me in my office. Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor.
Oh, you're welcome. Uh, Mister Bivens and Wiley, I got you on the line. Um, it's one of the constituents had, uh, dialed in and said, uh, Isabel, um, hadn't got picked up.
That's off of Mi- Michigan, right?
Two, three, four, five, Isabel.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll, I'll take it. I'll look at that tomorrow, but I, I think that's off of Michigan Avenue and that was on, that's a Friday's route. It should have been picked up Saturday. But I'll definitely take a look at it, make sure.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
And that's two, three, five, right? Two, three, five, four, Michigan, I mean, is, two, three, five, four, Isabel, okay.
Go ahead, Councilman Shaw.
I, 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 I just, um, looked at my notes, uh, I forgot one thing. You know, Jerome talked about, he sent a, uh, message out concerning the water. So are we good with those meter repairs? I know he, he, he may mention of in the email.
Yes, sir. That repair was completed today. They did the bacteria test. We all said that meter's open and that IK one is back up and running and functioning properly.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Chair, I know.
Sorry about that.
I know you may mention, Mister Chair, about, you know, some people, uh, buying land if they live with a person uh, who has code violations, that that should not hinder them. Now, do we need that in writing? Because if someone lives with me and I have a, I have a code violation or I owe back taxes, does that hurt my relative from buying any property in the city? So is that something that we need to put in writing so that, you know, uh, people will understand that just because I have a code violation, it doesn't stop my nephew from buying any property in the city?
I think that that would be something that this body would, would, would say, but I think it is, it doesn't exist right now. I mean, we just saying again, if you're an individual or you're a company and you owe the city any money or you have any code violations, that, uh, you can't buy any property to those things are cleaned up. I think that should suffice unless you wanna take it another step to it and that, and add that to it.
Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, if, if my nephew wants to buy property and he lives with me and he's using my address to put on the application and they pull up in code enforcement that, you know, hey, you living at this address, it has bad water. But yet, you know, that's my water and it's not his, even though he lives here and he has put the address of my property onto the application.
I see what you're saying.
So.
I see what you're saying.
Does that stop him from getting any property?
That will be up to this body to make that consideration and if you guys are saying.
Mister Mayor, I don't even see why we going through that. I mean, if the young man ain't got no, you got a clean record and you wanna buy a piece of property, understand why we, why we talking about, because he got a relative that owe money that he can't buy. That, that's, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, I, hey, I agree. I mean, because we're not, we're not in, we're not in the business as the chairman mentioned that in the real estate business. So I, I agree with you, Councilman, for sure, for sure. I just don't want nobody to be held up because of.
Okay. All right, then, then just, you know, I know a lot was said tonight, but I wanted, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize and send my condolences out to the Payne family and the loss of Walter Payne. It worked, uh, number of years for the East Public School District. Also to, to the Terrell family and the loss of Valerie Terrell, who worked, uh, for the East Public School District. She passed away yesterday. My condolences goes out to, to, to them as well, as Lorenzo Terrell used to work here in the Inchester. Uh, her son used to work here in, uh, Inchester, um, at the, uh, in the custodial and maintenance, uh, department. We did have one, so my condolences goes out to, to those families. Well, anyway, um, family, keep, stay safe. Um, you know, we, we know that the, the, the COVID numbers are, are going down, um, you know, people are getting vaccinated. However, you know, still wear your mask, still practice social distancing. That's the way we keep it away to the best of our ability. So, um, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Mister Mayor, I have one question for you before we adjourn.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on it, on the, um, T M L, um, they make, so residents should put their trash out? They may pick it up or they may not?
No, they should still put their trash, they still should put their trash out because they're, 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 they're just shorthanded, but they're trying to catch up and pick up. So, um, we'll put it out there. It may be the next day that they pick it up right now until they get more, um, people, employees in place. But this is not just the city of Inchester. GFL actually covers, uh, a number of different, uh, communities around us. So.
Right, okay.
They're short-staffed and trying to pick up the trash. So still put it out. And then if it's out there for, you know, two days, please call us, email us, or, uh, put it into C Click Fix, whatever we need to do to, 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 to get it picked up. We'll do that.
Yeah, because it's hot and the garbage out there is gonna be smelling. So that's why I was asking, should we just wait a day or whatever? But, okay.
Yeah, we just don't wanna miss, we, because GFL's not telling us that. If they tell us that, then we'll do, we'll, we'll go from there and do that. At the same time, I know that Mister Bivens ha- has, has made a, a several proposals about what we can do in the meantime.
Okay, okay.
Better make sure that it's feasible for, for us as well.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Motion for adjournment?
For, so move.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Those who don't wanna stay can say nay and you can stay on, but meeting is adjourned. You have a good evening.